Good evening. Call to order, we have a quorum. Could we please have the roll call? Mr. Chief Deputy City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. Roll call. Mayor Stix.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Whitman.
Here.
Councilmember Rule. Councilmember Lang.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Okay, and we are coming back from closed session. So anything to report out?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The City Council met in closed session to consider one item of significant exposure litigation related to a transactional occurrence known to potential plaintiffs, the Cabin Village project, the city's approval of the Cabin Village project. And on that, there is a report out. The council has directed staff to bring forward a public site vetting process for the Cabin Village project specific site, not a site selection process as was previously done. Now, a planning, sequo analysis process vetting the Lower Public Works Yard site for the Cabin Village project, which will come to a future Planning Commission meeting. More information will be available from the city's website on the exact dates of that coming Planning Commission meeting. Thank you. And with that, Madam Mayor, I can also make the AB 2449 announcement.
That'd be wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The mayor will be participating, as authorized by the Brown Act, remotely in tonight's meeting under Assembly Bill 2449, which permits councilmembers to participate in city council meetings remotely when they can demonstrate just cause and when a quorum of the city council is physically present in the city. We have four councilmembers present here. Mayor Stix is participating remotely under the just cause exception, given a medical situation. With that, Mayor Stix will be participating using the autovisual technology. Councilmembers participating remotely under AB 2449 are required to disclose at the start of the meeting whether any other individuals 18 years of age are older or present in the remote location, and if so, the relationship with those individuals. I'll ask Mayor Stix, can you confirm that you're the only person over 18 with you? Or if not, disclose those persons over 18?
Yep, only human in here.
No rules for pets on AB 2449, but we welcome all, all furry friends.
They're in here.
And last, as required by AB 2449, all votes taken tonight will be by roll call. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. All right, we will go ahead and close the closed session and we'll open the open session. So welcome everyone to the September 10th, 2024, meeting of the Ojai City Council. Mr. Chief Deputy City Clerk, could we have the pledge, please?
Yes, Mayor, absolutely. Welcome, community. Please rise as you are able. Our flag is here as we are facing, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
And I'll second it.
Okay, roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor.
We have to have a roll call since I'm virtual.
That's correct. Roll call. Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Councilmember Francina.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Whitman.
Yes.
Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Mayor Stix.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. And no commission reports?
No, Mayor.
And no presentation? So we will go ahead and move on to general public comment. And just a reminder to everyone, this is, these are items not on the agenda. So because they're not on the agenda, we cannot discuss them, and we can't agendize them for the future. I don't have the card, so it's up to you, Mr. City Clerk, correct?
Yes, Mayor, I'll take care of it here. First, we'll have Mike Eckhart, followed by Daryl Ralston, and then Anita Cram. Mike?
Thanks. It's Eckhart, by the way. No biggie. Yeah, my name is Mike Eckhart, and I put this meeting on my calendar last week, coming and expecting to see an update on what's going on for the concert season 2025 at the Libby Bowl. And it's crickets, and there's nothing that seems to be going on. I'm pretty concerned about that, because the concert business is a worldwide, excuse me, it is a year-round business, and lots of shows for next year are being booked by other venues. And we seem to be sort of standing still at the moment. And I know about this business, because for most of my working life, I've been an executive in the music business at Warner Brothers and Universal Music and Capitol. And I was also on the original committee nine years ago, when we bought, when we brought and recommended to the committee, to the council, to bring in Sterling Ventures to run our concert business here. And we've had eight years of pretty great shows, and I'm pretty proud of that. And to kind of give everyone a back history of how that committee came together, that was an ad hoc committee that was put forth after, a couple of years after the renovation of the Bowl. A lot of people came forward and said they could book shows at the Libby Bowl. And for three or four years, nothing really happened. And so the then-city council and the then-city manager recognized that perhaps we should bring in folks from the community that had music industry experience, and that ad hoc committee was formed. And we were pretty successful at vetting that. We had an understanding, those of us on the committee, of the players in the business, of how the business worked, what to look out for, the reputations of people that were submitting. And I think in the end, it kind of came out okay for the last eight years. A lot of, as my friend says, a lot of joy from all of the concerts that we've had here. And I'm hoping we're going to continue that. But right now, it feels a little unsettled. And so I'm going to sort of respectfully propose that the council consider doing that again, starting another ad hoc committee based with people in the community that have experience in the music business, to help everyone, to help the city manager, to help the city council, understand what's going on out there in the community and in this industry, and to make sure we have partners that are going to be putting on, again, joyful 2025 concerts for this coming year and beyond. So I would hope you consider that, consider that. And also, I'd hope you also consider making sure we agendize something, an update next week, our next council meeting, I should say, on what's going on with the 2025 season. So time is of the essence, and I hope we can get rolling on that. So thanks very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike.
Next, we'll have Daryl Ralston, followed by Anita Cram, and then we'll move on to Zoom.
Mayor and council, my name is Daryl Ralston. I'm the president of the Persimmon Hill Homeowners Association. And two weeks ago, you guys made a decision that has some large impacts on many people, a decision to place Cabin Village in a residential area. As a 44-year resident of Ojai, I'm asking you to reevaluate and rescind your decision and look for the right place for Cabin Village. Use a committee, find a location that minimal impact. Go back and listen to Mr. Whitman's comments about trying to create a matrix, to try to look at options and try to evaluate something that helps the whole community, not just the Cabin Village. So I just ask you to change your decision and do something for Ojai. Thank you.
Thank you, Daryl.
Next, we'll have Anita Cram. We'll move on to Zoom.
Good evening, everyone. I would just like to thank the city for publishing the Ojai Outlook. I think it's very helpful for the community. A lot of people don't know what's going on. Some say the city council doesn't do anything, and I'm like, are you kidding? And so, thank you.
Thank you, Anita.
Next, we'll have Star Child before we move on to Zoom.
Hi, good evening. I'm coming up on my anniversary, first year in Ojai, and I wanted to comment a little bit about the character of the town, something that I finally think I'm beginning to appreciate. I haven't lived much in a small town, and I really appreciate the community. I appreciate the farmers' markets. I appreciate being able to wave to people, seeing my city council members out on the street, and the friendships with the neighbors that I've made. One thing I hear about a lot is the importance of preserving our small-town character, the community. And one thing that I think gets forgotten in that discussion is another character of the community, and that's the character for the people who rent here, like me. There's a certain anxiety, knowing that at any time, the house that you're living in can be sold, your lease can be canceled, you'll have to find a new home, maybe you won't be able to afford the homes that are available on the market. That's happened to a few of my friends. I can think of at least three households that have been so affected. And when I think about that character of the community that affects 50% of our residents, I think that we do need a change, a change in the character, not the part that's great about Ojai, but the part that anxiety, that fear, I think can be changed for the better. We can alleviate that. The population of Ojai used to be much larger than it is today, closer to 8,000 instead of 7,500. We can accommodate more people here, we can accommodate more housing, we can maintain our character, but we can also provide a relief of that anxiety that so many of my neighbors deal. Thank you.
Thank you, Star Child.
That's all in-house, and we have no raised hands on Zoom, Mayor, so we'll move on.
Okay, we will move on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
I'd like to poll item D.
D, okay. All right, is there a, okay, we'll have a roll call for everything other than D?
Mayor, this is Weston here. If I may interrupt, we had Ron Solarsino from the Ventura County Library, and it's my fault, I missed him. We could have Ron come up now and fill his comment.
Thank you.
My fault.
All righty. Yeah, thank you so much. Yeah, apologies for the confusion. My name is Ron Solarsino. I am the regional librarian for the Ojai Valley, and I just wanted to give you all a quick update. We actually are quite excited, because this school year, the Ojai Library started its enrichment center, operating Monday through Thursday after school while school is in session, so from 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM. What we're offering now is, it's more than what we used to do. We used to do focus on homework help, and now we're focusing more on a wider variety of enrichment activities for students and children. Basically, anything relating to, you know, science, technology, engineering, art, you know, all these topics, a variety of activities each day, and parents and their children, ooh, parents and their children are welcome to come by and join us on any of those days. We also do have a program coming up. I didn't realize this, but apparently Sunday, September 22nd, is Hobbit Day. And so we are inviting children and their families to come to the library at 12:30 on that Sunday to take part in a celebration, enjoy some snacks and some activities. The other thing I wanted to mention is that we are in the thick of our One County, One Book Community Reading Program right now. The title that we are reading is Rough Sleepers by Tracy Kidder. And we are going to have on Saturday, September 28th, we're going to have a film screening of the 2018 movie, The Public, starring Emilio Estevez, which is a story about some unhoused individuals who take shelter in a public library during a bitterly cold winter. And then we're going to follow that screening with a book discussion, talking about rough sleepers and the topics therein. And then later on in October, on the 12th of October, that's a Saturday, we're going to have the Ventura County Celebration of Books taking place on the campus of CSU Channel Islands. That's going to feature at 11:00 AM, a panel on homelessness in Ventura County with some local stakeholders talking on that panel. And then at 2:00 PM, we're going to have a talk by Dr. O'Connell, who is the subject of the book, Rough Sleepers. So there's more information on all of that available through the library website, and if anyone has any questions, you can always come talk to me as well over at the Ojai Library. That's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you, Mayor and Council, and we just have our last public comment before closing the period. Nancy?
Hello, I'm Nancy Fritz. I've lived in Ojai for four years. I would just wanted to say if, to make a proposal to put in a traffic light at North Korea Road and Miracopa Highway. Right there is, school is coming out, the high school, there's kids, there's people going to Vons, there's a left-turn lane, the right-turn lane to Ventura Avenue, it is so busy, and the e-bikes going by really fast. And when I cross on my bike or with my dogs, even in strollers, people just run through the pedestrian light, and then there's also the 25 miles an hour for the school light. And I just want to protect our, my kids are grown, but protect the kids of Ojai. It's just so dangerous. So I would like to just start getting the ball rolling here, and then I think I need to go to Public Works also and talk to them, but it would be great if we could put a traffic light and just slow down the people, you know, from going crazy to go left turn to right turn, and then protect our kids in Ojai. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. That's it, Weston?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, and any public comment on the consent calendar?
Mayor, we have a request to council for one more public comment.
Okay.
Please state your name into the microphone.
Yes, my name is Dr. Timothy Williamson. I have practiced in this community for over 40 years, both in private practice and the emergency room. The tent community cabin location, as Daryl Ralston has told you, is really poorly thought out. And if for any reason it has to be put there, I would ask that the entrance not be on Montgomery, that it be on a different street. But I don't think it should belong there at all, but particularly the entrance should not be facing Persimmon Hill, if at all possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williamson. That's it? Weston?
Yes, Mayor, and we'll state the general public comment period is closed.
Okay, thank you. And no public comment on the consent calendar?
Correct, Mayor.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the consent calendar except for D. Is there a motion? Okay, we already have the roll call, please, Weston?
Yes, motion by Councilmember Francina, second by Councilmember Rule, with polled item D from Councilmember Whitman. Roll call. Mayor Pro Tem Whitman?
Yes.
Councilmember Rule?
Yes.
Mayor Stix?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Lang?
Yes.
Thank you very much, and I would just like to thank Will Pettner, our chief analyst, for closing the loophole. I'm talking about item E, closing the loophole about having the thick plastic bags that were introduced, reintroduced, I guess, during COVID, and I'm really happy about that. So thank you, Will, if you're listening. All right, Mayor Pro Tem, you would like to discuss D?
Yes.
Point, Mayor? I would like to call the question.
Which question?
The question, basically, you know, call the question and vote on it. This is the third time we've pulled it, the fourth time, so there is, on Rosenberg's rules, the ability to call the question. We've had the discussion over and over and over again. We had the discussion last council meeting. Our Councilmember Lang was not able to vote. Unless there's something significantly different, which I don't suppose that there is, there's no need to waste more time on this. So I am proposing that we call the question, take a vote, and that is, I am within my rights to do so.
Okay, thank you. All right, so Mr. City Attorney, do we need a second for that?
Yeah, under Rosenberg's, calling the question is a motion to call the question, takes a second, and then is immediately voted upon. If the motion to call the question is approved, then we vote on the underlying item. If that motion fails, then there can be debate and discussion. The only thing before we call the question, or consider that, I want to confirm there's no public comment on this item either, because we would have to take public comment if there was any before we had a call for the question. But there was no public comment on item 1D?
No public comments received in-house. Let's extend this further into our Zoom participants. Zoom participants, we are talking about consent item, which was polled 1D, and we'll give you the opportunity to raise your hand now if you need to and give you a moment. No raised hands?
So with no public comment, then with the second, then the call to the question could be voted on?
Okay, we have a second? Yep.
I can't make a second. That was a question.
Okay, is there a second for the call to question?
Okay, then.
Okay, all right, Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, and I'm not going to be very long. I think that the ordinance as rewritten should be adopted, but I think it should have a time limit. And I'm open to any reasonable time limit. Last time, I suggested 120 days. And if somebody wants more time than that, but I think there should be a bookend so that we don't have a situation where somebody is a district representative and their representation of the district goes on indefinitely without residing, could be the entirety of a term as the way it's written.
Yeah, I mean, I asked if, there's no mayor here.
Yeah, Councilmember.
On Zoom, yes.
So here's my question. I truly want to understand why this is so important to you, because basically, what you are saying is that if a council member doesn't find housing, are you thinking, that we already discussed that there is a time limit, because that council member, in this case, myself, cannot run unless they're living at the time that they, how do I want to say this, Matt? At the time that they, if they want to be reelected, they have to be living in their district. That is clear, correct? So that's, that is the time limit. And I want to know, do you think that if a council member doesn't find housing, say, within 200 days, two years, that they haven't tried hard enough? Why would you want to, you know, in a way, what you're doing is, your proposal to put a time limit on a duly-elected official is you're negating the voting process, is what you're doing, okay? Now, I can speak from experience. I may be living in the most difficult district, which is District Four. I don't think that you're ever going to have, the chances, first of all, that there's going to be another renter on the council at this point in time is very, very slim, because a renter doesn't have the security of a four-year lease. So, you know, and the reality is that we are in an extreme housing crisis. I reached a point, I even brought, this represents, you know, two years' worth of seeking, okay? I didn't bring the, all the, everything I went through with the grand jury, with the fair political practices, I didn't bring up all the harassment. But what you're doing is you're, oh, and I didn't, the other thing is that what it really comes down to is this. It's a choice, if a council member has a dog, it's really a choice between keeping your seat or keeping your dog, because if I had gotten rid of my dogs, I wouldn't have had any trouble whatsoever finding housing, affordable housing. That is the bottom line, okay? So you're, so what you're doing is essentially saying that if a council member can't find housing in their district during their term, that, you know, why would you want to remove a really, a council member that's been elected? What is your reasoning? Because for a small town, even if I don't reside in my district, I probably spend more time in my district than anybody sitting here. I have lived longer in my district than some of the people sitting here that have lived in Ojai. You know, altogether, during this term, I was in my district a little over two years. You know, and I, and, but, I mean, that should be good enough. And when I moved out of my, when I wasn't in my district, I was like a five-minute walk away from my district. So I was just as much in touch with my district as if I'd had a house there. There's just, this is not a huge, this is not Los Angeles or San Francisco. You know, I meet people in my district everywhere I go. It's not, it's not a problem being in touch and representing my district. And as luck would have it, most of the problems we have are in my district. You know, the housing situation's in my district, so the homeless housing situation. So I would like to know your reasoning, because it could happen that you would have someone that you really like on the council, and then they'd be subject to whatever time constraint you wish to place on them. And they would then, instead of being an elected, you could use this process to remove a council member who's voting you don't particularly like, and then you could appoint, it could be used in the wrong way. You know, there's that potential. We've discussed the potential of a council member, you know, not, you know, there's always going to be some, you know, potential problem, but I don't believe that most, I would like to think that everyone elected here to this council is honest.
Okay, I'll respond to your question.
Thank you.
My view is that state law says that we are to elect our council members by district. There are, and I appreciate the effort to create some flexibility in how we interpret that. And, but I could either approach the time limit, which I've approached, or I could approach the idea, which I view as impossible, to come up with regulations on how you determine that somebody is unable to be housed in their district despite their efforts. So the simplest seems to be to put an objective standard, which is a certain number of days. So I'll, I'll move, and I didn't, I did intend to keep this short, but, you know, I'll move that we adopt the ordinance with the amendment that the council member needs to find a residence in their district within 180 days.
Mayor, I'd like to make a substitute motion?
Yeah. Is there, yes, sure, I will second that motion, but go ahead.
I'm going to make a substitute motion that we adopt the ordinance as written, week after week after week after week. And, you know, just simply, it's discriminatory against renters, number one, who have no control over their living situation. And I think that Councilmember Francina has spoken, has spoken truly about this. We know that Liz Campos was evicted, Ventura councilperson, was evicted from her home because of her political leanings, at least, you know, that's the word. And she's, she's a very honest woman. I don't suppose she would be saying that if that weren't true. And so it can be used. And secondarily, we're trying to get rid of districts. There's, you know, we're, the population has voted that we should try as soon as possible to remedy the situation that is, that just does not work for us. So for that reason, I'm making a substitute motion that we adopt the ordinance as is. These what-if scenarios are endless, and I just don't see them as truly, as being true to Ojai. And I would also ask City Attorney if indeed we are violating, this ordinance would violate state law?
No, the ordinance does not violate state law. State law does not prescribe the edges of what happens when a council member does not establish or has an involuntary loss of residency. That's a situation state law does not describe what happens in that case. So the ordinance as drafted or as would be amended, both are lawful.
Okay, so, thank you. That is my substitute motion.
Is there a second for that motion?
Yes, if I, I would like to second it, but I'd like to give my reasons why. I've thought about this a lot. And one thing that I think we also want to consider is that if there were to be some kind of fire or earthquake and, and areas of our community were damaged to the point where they were not habitable, things are taking a lot longer to, so the, because of the supply chain and because of all of the effects of COVID that we mentioned here, things are just taking longer to renovate and to rebuild. And so my reasoning is for the renting, for the renters, and for some of the reasons that we've established with Councilwoman Francina's situation, but also just because of the potential that any one of us could be replaced, could be displaced at any time.
Thank you. And I just want to say, I can see both sides of the coin here, and I think what Councilmember Rule brought up is really important, that we would like to get rid of districts, so that's, I think it's important to keep that in mind. Councilwoman Francina?
Yes, I wrote this down, because I want to be real clear. This law was never intended to be, this law was meant to protect the rights of under- intended to be, it would, this, this law was meant to protect the rights of underrepresented minorities, okay? If you have plenty of money and pay five, six, seven thousand a month for a house, or you can have your two dogs in a backyard, you'll have no trouble finding a house under 120 days or whatever it is that you're, uh, thinking of. Um, this, what you're, 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 you're attempting to remove a legitimately elected official, you know? In my case, I worked very hard. The community worked very, very hard. A lot of money was spent getting me elected. And that is why I didn't take the easy road out. I could have quit and had plenty of reason to quit. I had so much harassment. And, but, this is, this in a way, because this council does not want to discriminate on the basis of wealth. This is your opportunity to not discriminate on the basis of wealth, to protect a renter who can only afford maybe 2,500 a month.
Thank you.
So I'll just clarify that, um, harassment that you received was preceded anybody on the council, and they reported you to the grand jury, and the grand jury came back and said that you were in violation of the law, that you had been for an extended period of time, and they gave us an instruction that we should remove you from your seat. We didn't do that. Uh, you know, those folks who voted no, you know, who voted...
Councilmembers, if I could jump in, the grand jury report is not the agenda item.
Right? Okay. So, uh, the, you know, so we asked for grand jury, we asked for Attorney General clarification.
For 10,000 dollars.
So, uh, you know, and, but, you know, it wasn't my intention to have this item go as long as it has, and it hasn't been my speaking that it's taken.
Well, uh, let's go ahead and...
So there's...
You, you've clarified that your intention is simply to obey the law. It was nothing personal. Okay, fine.
It's not personal at all.
But we, we...
In fact, we did not, nobody ever voted from the city council to remove you.
Let's go ahead and have, we have a motion, and we have a second. Let's have the roll call.
Yes, Mayor, we have a motion by Councilmember Rule, with a second by Councilmember Lang to adopt the ordinance as recommended. Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Whitman?
Nope.
Councilmember Lang?
Yes.
Councilmember Rule?
Yes.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Motion passes four to one.
Okay, all right, we will move on to our dis- uh, no, actually, we have a remainder, nope, I'm sorry. Um, we're gonna move on to our discussion item number two. City of Ojai Traffic Motor Officer, 2024, 2025. Uh, we have a, a staff report?
Yes, Mayor, Chief Newman will be delivering the report this evening. Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, uh, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Councilmember. So what you have before you is a concept that was developed, uh, carefully and taken into consideration, all of our concerning issues here in the city of Ojai regarding our traffic safety. Uh, we were asked for a solution to help mitigate all of our increased traffic problems over the years, and we heard some, uh, concerns, um, from many of our community members regarding distracted driving, stop sign violations, speeding, parking, e-bike, um, complaints, uh, illegal motorized bikes in the city, on sidewalks, um, and the like. And I'm sure you've heard them all. Um, I, as you know, anytime you mix pedestrian traffic with vehicle traffic, bicycle traffic, you're going to have inherent rights. There's no doubt about that. And with our city streets and the areas that are in our 4.3 square miles, our city is ripe for having those concerns. And unfortunately, we had two very recent incidents that, that occurred, um, as a result of those concerns. Unlike our current patrol officers, um, a traffic motor would be dedicated strictly to working traffic in the city. And that being said, a traffic motor is an enforcement tool. That is not the only thing that they would do while they were here. They would be an extra resource. They would provide education. They would be conducting, uh, smart start education, bike safety courses at our schools. They would be assisting Public Works in assuring that all of our signage in the city is correct and within the law. And they would be supporting all of our safety, um, uh, um, planning for all of our city events that we have here. Some statistics, uh, for 2024 alone, we are in, up in traffic accidents, 18%. Um, and that's just in traffic accidents in general. In terms of injury accidents, we're actually up by 70% this year compared to last year. The Office of Traffic Safety, which is a state-wide program that supports, uh, grants here in California for traffic enforcement, traffic safety, education, and those sorts of things, ranked the city of Ojai as being ninth in traffic accidents involving bicycles out of 76 cities that have the similar, uh, similar population. This idea wasn't something we came up of with overnight. As you know, the city of Ojai had a motor officer back in the day. I think it was roughly between 2001 and 2005. There was obviously an issue back then, and that was the reason why they, um, they had a motor position for those, at that particular time. And over the years, traffic has only gotten worse. We've had an increased number of visitors, increased number of, um, vehicles on the roadway. So obviously, there is still a need for some type of enforcement and education here in the city. I've heard the comment before, uh, that bringing a traffic motor officer is bringing a big-city solution to a small city. Um, and I understand that. I live here in Ojai, and I, I understand the uniqueness of Ojai in wanting to, you know, be the small city that we are. However, in my position, seeing the things that we've seen, um, and experienced, I can say that we have our share of big-city problems here in a small city in regards to traffic. So this is my concept I am presenting. Um, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Chief Newman. Much appreciated. Any questions from council? Yeah, Councilmember, yep, Francina?
Yes. Um, the, the other, um, responsibilities for this, um, traffic motor officer, as you said, would include education, uh, bike safety, signage, and all those other things. But at the moment, a- all of that can be provided by the community, correct?
By, by... To the community?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it, it can, I mean, we, we have the resources. I, I agree that we need that. We desperately need that. But we do, I believe, that the Public Works should be handling the signs, signage.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, um, I'm, there's a, a, many, many parents and volunteers who just need, uh, you know, some organization who have, over the years, there's always been a group of people who would like, who dedic- who volunteer time for education and things like that. Just want to make that clear. Am I, I'm correct? Am I correct?
Ye- yes, you, you are correct. Some of these things that, um, education-wise, that, that a traffic motor would be responsible for and also, you know, conduct, those are the things that also would go toward the possibility of receiving more grants for that specific position. And there's obligations for grants that we have to meet, and part of those are those type of educational courses. Um, and your question about, do we already provide those to the community, even though we don't have a traffic motor officer? We do. It's just a lot more difficult. We don't have a dedicated unit that does that. We have to borrow sometimes, um, those individuals from other areas, such as the stations from Camry or Thousand Oaks, because they have dedicated traffic units and individuals that do that on a regular basis. Ojai does not. Um, so we've had to borrow those, and it has worked. Um, but with that traffic motor officer, that just means that they would be able to do that on a regular basis without us having to reach out to another area.
I would like to discuss that further when it comes time for discussion. Uh, but my other, my other question is, am I, I'm understanding that we had, uh, an officer for four years, 2001 to 2005, and did they let him go because of the finances or because everything was so much better? Or do you know why?
From my understanding, it was the budget during the time, uh, that the city was having a little bit of a budget crunch, and so they had to eliminate that position and sell the motorcycle to...
Yeah.
To get money from them. Yes.
So, so just to, again, to clarify, the estimated cost is 325,000 a year, and, and, you know, we would need him, what's the word, into per- forever, once he gets started, because if we remove him, if we're dependent on his presence rather than other speed deterrents, uh, that's my concern.
Sure. Yeah, it would be an ongoing cost.
That's an ongoing cost.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Chief. Any other questions from council? Councilmember Berlang?
Thank you. Um, so, uh, a couple of questions. We currently have, we're currently spending a lot of money on the contract with, with, for our current enforcement, our current officers. Um, is there any kind of traffic enforcement that's happening right now?
So, yes, there is. You have two dedicated patrol officers at any given time. However, their priority is to answer calls for service. And we have been, just in the month of August alone, we've had over 2,000 calls for service in one month. So that may not leave a whole lot of time for our officers to work patrol, I mean, excuse me, traffic enforcement, especially in areas of, um, communities where there are a high number of complaints for either speeding, traffic, um, uh, stop sign violations, those sort of things. Specifically, when you get into the area, there are a lot of, for example, there is no area where we can park a vehicle and do any traffic enforcement, because there is no shoulder on the roadway. So a traffic motors, motor officer could do that much easily. Um, but again, to answer your question, we do do traffic enforcement, although it is limited because our priority is to answer calls for service.
Thank you. Um, I have one more question. Um, and that is, you know, we had the, the speed study that was done on drown, the drown, the slow-down drown, uh, initiative. And, uh, and we, did we ever have findings from that, or was there ever a report that came out? Because I, I remember in previous conversations, we talked about how the speeds were being reduced because of the interactive speed signs. Um, but is there, is there any, uh, yeah, is, it, it, do we have a report or any kind of finding that came out from that?
To my knowledge, the, the information that came out of that was there was, there was a s- a, a speed, um, I'm not gonna say violation, but there was a, a maximum, um,
Increased, decreased?
Increase, yeah. Like, uh, 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 you know, a certain degree of speeding, but it, it didn't, it wasn't in excess of like five miles per hour on that particular street. What we did find was that it was the volume of traffic was the main concern, because there were more cars, there's more vehicles traveling on the roadway, giving probably perception that there are more cars that are speeding. But there was no evidence to indicate that there was, um, speeding in excess of five miles per hour.
Did, wasn't there, uh, wasn't there a, uh, I believe it was James, who said, James Vega, who said that, that the interactive speed signs, that they had evidence that they slowed down the traffic, that they were actually working to reduce the traffic by certain speeds?
Are you talking about the, the, uh...
The grand?
Flashing?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah.
That, I don't know. That, we, there's no information that we gather. There's no data from those particular signs. It's based upon really the, the driver.
Okay.
So if you're a person that, that follows those signs, great. If not, then it doesn't, you know, we're not collecting any data from that.
Okay.
Um, it, they can be said to that. Those particular ones are not.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Uh, Councilmember?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up, um, with, uh, Councilmember Francina's, uh, point that, um, you know, eventually you would like to have citizen groups who would sort of, um, do the training and, you know, the teaching and that kind of thing. But that's something that the, uh, officer could also be organizing community groups to do this training. So it could be a train-the-trainers kind of environment as easily as it could be, uh, direct training, correct?
Abs- absolutely.
I mean, you could have a parent, you know, in organizing of parents and/or interested community members, and they could be trained. And so you could have one-to-many-to-many as opposed to, yeah, so...
Absolutely.
Yeah.
That would be an essential part of that position, is the education and forming of groups at schools or, uh, you know, any, any type of volunteers that would want to put on that type of education. So, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's go ahead and move on to public comment.
Thanks, Mayor. In-house, first we'll have Anita Cram, followed by John Buetti and Tom Francis. Anita?
Hello. So I'm a little bit skeptical about this. I do believe our streets need to be safer. Um, but I also know that there are times, extended periods, where the streets are really dead. If we have extended hot periods, it's very dead. If we have rain, they're very dead. So I'm just not sure that, that this is the solution. So I, I kind of think having some kind of data would be helpful. And if those interactive signs did reduce speed, and it seems like they should be able to collect data because they, you know, they tell you what speed you're going. So it seems like there could be a data collection element of it. And, um, I did read the public comments on this, and I think Bill Miley brought up traffic study, and so I think that would be helpful. Another person brought up that, yes, the streets are, have gotten, you know, there are problems. Acknowledge that 100%. But I, I also think that this runs a high risk of having a high level of community backlash. Um, there was a motorcycle cop up here one weekend. I didn't see it, but just that one, I heard lots of comments, negative comments, from community members about just that one weekend that that occurred. So, so anyway, I just am a bit skeptical on that this is the solution to jump into. Thank you.
Thank you, Anita.
Next, we have John Buetti, followed by Tom Francis, and then Andy Gilman.
Well, um, thank you, council and staff. I appreciate what you people do. You work really hard for very little recompense, so thank you. Um, but, um, I'm gonna actually relate one of the, uh, Anita was talking about, people with negative comments about the motorcycle cop. And, um, first of all, I'm against it. I think it's, we're spending a lot of money, um, on a motorcycle cop that could be used, um, in many other places. Plant trees after the heat that we've had this week. You know, clearly, we need shade, and that money could be used for trees alone. But let me convey an experience I had with the motorcycle cop last weekend. I was at the Chevron Station, right, across from the coffee roasters, was pumping gas, and all of a sudden I heard this. Wait for the pedestrians to cross before proceeding through the intersection. I was like, what was that? Like, is that God? And, and I turned around, and I see a motorcycle cop in this position, like, very intimidating, black, silvery-black helmet on, like he was, you know, like a devotee of the Oakland Raiders or something. And, and I thought, it's, is it that guy? And once again, pedestrian crosses, same message. But it was reco- it was a recorded message that sounded like, I mean, I sounded like I was in Moscow, not Ojai. And I, and I thought, what are we getting ourselves into here? Like, who approved this? Like, someone vetted this, thought this was a good idea, and that scares me. Like, um, so please do not approve a motorcycle cop. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Next, we have Tom Francis, then Andy Gilman, and then we'll move on to Zoom.
Good evening, Mayor Sticks and councilmembers. In March of 2020, Measure C was passed with an impressive 83% of the vote. It was a new extra tax on tourists who stay in Ojai hotels. The reason Measure C was so popular... The reason Measure C was so popular with Ojai voters was that all of the proceeds were earmarked solely for things that really mattered to them, such as caring for our heritage trees, planting new ones, local climate action, increasing our water supply, doing more to care for our roads and fire safety. In the 2024-2025 city budget process, the Measure C fund absorbed an unfair share of our road paving liability. This left very little funding for the critical tree and fire safety work that was initially promised to voters that passed Measure C, and artificially increased our general fund balance. Now there is a proposal to expend this extra money in the discretionary general fund to hire a motorcycle officer to write more traffic citations. Though likely unintentional, this inequitable transfer of road paving liability has resulted in a bait and switch where voters were promised trees and fire safety, and instead may get a $1,000 a day motor officer. Many in our community feel that a motorcycle cop is way beyond what Ojai needs to achieve our traffic safety goals. And in order to remedy this budgeting error, we are proposing a more efficient and effective data-driven approach to set traffic safety that costs less than a third of the proposed $350,000 a year motorcycle officer. Therefore, we encourage the Council to forego the new motor officer and instead vote in favor of an education-first, enforcement-second approach to encouraging people in Ojai to drive safely. This approach would include installation of interactive speed signs on known problem streets throughout Ojai. These speed signs show drivers how fast they're going and flash red when motors are traveling over the speed limit. We believe that most drivers don't want to speed, and that once educated by the speed signs, these unintentional speeders will slow down. As for the intentional speeders that ignore the flashing warnings, the speed signs collect data on how fast each car is traveling and when. This multi-location, speed travel data can be collected from interactive speed signs on a regular basis, and existing Ojai police can be directed at the right time of day to the street that has the worst speeding problem, therefore, thereby enforcing on those who are speeding with intent. You have all received a copy of a letter in support of this approach that was signed by 204 Ojai area residents. 146 of these people live in the city of Ojai. When asked, the overwhelming majority, when asked, the overwhelming majority of Ojai voters favor this education-first, enforcement-second approach over hiring a motorcycle cop. Therefore, we respectfully request that you vote in favor of this alternative solution. Thank you.
Next, we have Andy Gilman, followed by Casey Abbott, and then move on to Zoom.
Hello, Council, Andy Gilman. I'm going to offer the alternative view, which is, at the end of the month, I was downtown in front of the Playhouse, and I saw the motorcycle officer, and it reminded me of being a teenager here. When you drove into town in your car, you knew there were police officers literally everywhere. So if you sped even a little, you would get a ticket. That's how it was when I was a teenager. Everything was different. And now it seems to me what the, what the officers have done is created a very welcoming environment, so people approached them very well. The difficulty is that there isn't a lot of traffic enforcement. And so literally every single day when I am meeting with people, traffic comes up and the threat of injury, but also the e-bikes. So when I saw the motorcycle officer on that day going up and down the street, everything was different. Everybody drove more slowly, and I thought, actually, this is a really interesting, good spend. So the arguments that I just heard now, a lot of those are either or arguments. We could do this or that, but it seems to me in this agenda, we're talking about this opportunity to spend money in different ways, so it's not one or the other thing. So I think we should be clear about that. I would vote in favor of this. I think that the difficulty we have sometimes is that we want to do things as a city and we value it, but we don't put the staff in place to take care of it. So a great example of that is the STR enforcement that we have now reinforced as a case in point. So I think this is the right call to adjust our traffic. The education won't work well enough for tourists, and that's a lot of what I was seeing on that Saturday. So I'm in favor. Thanks.
Thank you, Andy.
Next, we have Casey Abbott, and then Teal on Zoom.
Good evening, Ojai. My name is Casey Abbott. Been here in Ojai for quite a while now. My personal experience happened over in Ventura, though. I was riding a bicycle and got hit by a car. I've been limping for the last year or so. I'm just now getting better. The car was going excessively fast, slowed down. I was already in a bike lane, trying to cross over onto a sidewalk to be out of traffic entirely. The car did not stop. Instead, it sped up, and I did an involuntary wheelie on the guy's hood for about two or three yards. I then flew through the air, landed on my head, straight vertically on my head, flew through the air again, and landed again on my head, and then onto my back. I was dragged partway by some bystanders into an area that was still in danger of being run over by other cars that hadn't come yet. I asked them, please pull me out onto the sidewalk, and they, gradually, kind of did. And it hurt a lot, and it continued to do so for most of the year. Y'all know what it's like to get hurt, one way or another. I was very lucky. My injuries have recovered for the most part. The point I would like to bring up a little about the officer is that what we have in Ojai is not so much a matter of lots and lots of little speeding incidents that are involuntary. We have a subculture of lawbreakers who love loud pipes, stomping on their gas pedals and showing off how macho they are, or how, what, what's the feminine equivalent of macho? I don't know, but there are some females who do the same thing. My feeling is that a nice big fat, there used to be like a $571 ticket. I don't know what they're up to now. But that tends to stifle that subculture very quickly. And the word does get around because they are all friends. Many of my personal friends are part of that subculture. I made that mistake once when I was a kid and never did again. I really think the motorcycle officer is an excellent solution to the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey.
We'll move on to Zoom now. Zoom participants, we are on item two. Teal, you can unmute, and you have the floor.
Thank you. Teal Rowe, Ventura County. And I hope that you all had the chance to read Bill Miley's letter because I thought it was really great, him talking, his logic actually, about collecting the data. And also, I, Councilmembers Francina and Rule both brought up the safety and volunteerism. And I recall Jeff Otterbine and all the kids on the bikes going to school and having the safety committee that he was in charge of. So there really are people that do that and want to do that. And I know personally for myself, when I see one of those signs with the speed on it, I'm, I'm not speeding, especially on grand, but I do realize that it's the awareness of the speed. And I am highly in support of not spending $300,000 a year on a motorcycle cop. So thank you for listening and allowing me to speak. I really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Teal.
No more raised hands on Zoom, Mayor. We can move on.
Okay, let's move on to discussion. Who would like to begin?
I don't mind if anybody.
Councilmember Francina?
So, as most of you know, I've been working on this since 1994. That's almost 30 years, okay? We, at one point, we had a very active bicycle coalition. And we did things, as, as Teal described, we had bike trains to school. We, we did everything. We had very engaged parents. So what is needed, you know, in an ideal world, we could do everything. The bike, the bicycle, the officer, you know, all of that. And, and just as, as Andy Gilman stated, my daughter remembers very well that when she got her driver's license, she's 40 now, all the kids were afraid of the local police ticketing them. So I don't know what, what happened to them. Our local police should be ticketing them. But to get to the root of the problem, I am a strong proponent of licensing bicycles, okay? That would take care of a lot of the problem. You don't get to ride, you know, parents should not be putting their kids on an e-bike until they've mastered a regular bike. The schools need to take this seriously. Bicycle, as you know, communities that are successfully bicycle-friendly, where hundreds of kids ride their bike safely to school, they have a, a unit that's ongoing. It's not an afterthought. It's, it's as critical as anything else. And in this era of global warming, we can absolutely justify helping to fund education. Because 50% of our pollution and, you know, comes from motor vehicles. I'm a big, I mean, I've gotten even more educated about this because I've just spent four years on the, or actually, eight years on the Ventura County Transportation Commission. So what, to get to the root of the problem, you need bicycle education in the schools. And the hotels should not be sending their, their, their clients or the tourists out unless they demonstrate that they know how to ride a bike. They shouldn't be riding on the wrong side of the street and in the arcade and all of that. We should not tolerate that. We need to have some kind of a statement that we make through the Chamber of Commerce or something to all the hotels. This cannot go on. This chaos, this anarchy cannot go on. So bike licensing, education in the schools, you can, and then, you know, you know, work with the school board. The whole community needs to be involved. Then, you know, I, I can, I think I'd like to just pause. I am in favor of the, the speed monitoring signs, but I'll, I'll let one of my colleagues speak to that. And then I'll, I think that, that's all I need to say for now. But rest assured, the community, that we're, the Council is acutely aware of the problem. And over the years, that we have, you know, this is an ongoing, we can't just have parents, parents get involved when their kids are in school, when the kids graduate. Unless a new army of parents get involved, you know, you, then you have the same chaos. That's why the education and the licensing is so important. That way you can catch them too, because they could have a little license plate on their seat. You could see that, you could probably, you know, it's, communities that take this seriously register all the bikes. The bikes are registered, just like a car. They're, the kids have to respect that this is a vehicle. It's not a toy. It can be used as a toy, and there should be places where they can use it as a toy. That's a whole other subject. There's a lot of parents and, and, you know, community organizers who've wanted to provide a place where the kids can play on their bikes, but they can't play on their bikes in the street.
Thank you. Mayor Protam?
Yeah. So one of the first things I did as a city council member was to agree to attend a meeting with residents from Quayama Street. And they were concerned that their street had become a thoroughfare as opposed to the residential street that they are designed to be. And that it was unsafe for them to walk on Quayama or to ride bikes on Quayama because people were, you know, zooming, zooming through that neighborhood. And, you know, one of the things that's happening around the city is that as Ojai Avenue becomes more and more congested, people are finding different routes. But when you're going from point A to point B, and you happen to be going through a residential neighborhood, sometimes you forget that you're in a neighbor, residential neighborhood, and you should slow down. And one of the things that came out of that meeting that I attended was that consensus, I believe that, Chief, you were present, Lindy Palmer was present. I'm trying to remember if it was James Vega or, but, you know, the consensus was that we needed to do something about enforcement if we were going to get people to comply with our traffic laws. I, we recently worked on council priorities. We haven't actually had that meeting yet. But I did quite a bit of preparation for that, both in terms of holding a meeting at a resident's home with invited residents, and, and I sent out a whole slew of emails to people saying, you know, what are the biggest issues that you think Ojai is being faced with? And, you know, what, what are, what do we need to do a better job as a city council in, in addressing? And overwhelmingly, people were concerned about traffic in some form or another. For some of them, it was traffic safety. A lot of them commented about e-bikes and lack of, well, aggressive driving on e-bikes. The speeding, traffic violations, and, you know, congestion in general were in, you know, you know, a whole slew of issues, but surrounding traffic. And I am in favor of our adopting, approving of the traffic officer. I believe that if it turns out that it's not money well spent, that we can, we can cancel that service and, and we can sell the motorcycle, and it won't be, you know, a huge expense to us. I think in the meantime, it could be a huge benefit if, if we, if we do some consistent traffic enforcement. I think a couple of things that I would add to that is that, you know, I would want us to instruct our motorcycle traffic officer that is, is or her emphasis was to watch for moving violations as opposed to, you know, registration, parking, kind of things that are non-moving, non-dangerous violations. I would also want to make sure that our timeframe that included, the traffic officer included the weekend, and that it also included, as we're looking at, you know, 40 hours that we, that, that it included days of the weekdays that were not predictable by the public, so that. And then I did get some feedback with this item that, that there, you know, were a lot of questions about our contract with the county and, you know, what, what should already be paid for through our county contract. The Chief has already explained that, you know, a little bit. But I am not opposed if, if somebody, you know, wants to add or amend, you know, to what we're doing, the idea of appointing an ad hoc committee to look at the contract with the county and make sure that we're maximizing our, our value in that contract. So my, I'll make a motion that we approve of this expense. And that we, oh, I guess one other thing. I do believe, and I think this is probably has to be another agenda item. But I, I think we absolutely should be requiring a license for anybody of any age who's driving a e-bike. If, but if it can go 30 miles per hour, which most of the e-bikes can, then we should be treating them as if they're a motor vehicle. They should be licensed. And they should be educated. I agree with Councilmember Francina on that. So back to my motion, I move that we approve that we, that the hours for traffic enforcement include specifically the weekend. And that we instruct our traffic officer that the emphasis should be on moving violations.
Is there a second for that motion?
Oh, second.
Okay. I would like to make an alternative motion, so, which I will explain in a minute. But in, instead of adopting, instead of hiring the motorcycle officer, I would like to direct staff to procure and install interactive speed monitoring signs and capping that. staff to procure and install interactive speed monitoring signs and capping that at a hundred thousand dollars. And that's the type that's mounted on a, a signpost, and install them in both directions in the most helpful locations where speeding may be a problem. And there's some suggested initial sites that were in the letter that was signed by two hundred and sixteen, two hundred and four Ojai area residents, and compile actual vehicle speed data captured by interact, by those signs, so the existing traffic enforcement officers can be directed to the problem locations. And direct Ojai City Police to monitor traffic on Ojai Avenue between Maricopa Highway and Bristol Street in an effort to identify and enforce upon those who are holding cellphones, so that's the distracted driving issue, to start off at that spot. And to direct staff to allocate the remaining two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, or, or the greater balance, to be utilized as council directs to pay for fire safety and climate mitigation, that includes non-native incendiary, incendiary vegetation removal, native and water-wise tree planting, and life extending care of our existing native trees, all of which will increase our town's shade canopy. So, that's my, my alternative motion.
Madam Mayor, if I could jump in, so, the, all of those things could be approved as a future agenda item, but tonight's agenda item is regarding the, the proposed motor traffic officer up for approval or disapproval with some modifications, but spending, directing the budget to be spent on quite a lot of other options is something that could be done by the council, but at a future meeting, not on tonight's agenda.
So, my motion is not to approve the hiring of the motorcycle.
I'll second that motion, and if we were allowed, I would, of course, approve your substitute motion.
Can I speak, can I speak about this? Can I, can I say a few? Thank you. So, I just wanted to add a couple of other reasons why, first of all, Chief Newman, thank you. I, I, I don't like, I don't like countering, countering you, because I know how much work and dedication you put into anything. But I've heard from a couple, from many of my constituents, I've, I've met with a number of, of them, and there have been concerns, there have been concerns ranging from, do we really want to be watching our neighbors get pulled over? And, and do we really, like, just the, the feeling that you have when you're driving by someone and they're getting pulled over? It, it's just, it's, it's hard, it's hard to watch your neighbors get, get in trouble for things. I am all for safety, I think safety is very important. I think that, that going with the mayor's motion, if we could allocate some of these resources to the, to, you know, interactive speed signs, or to education, to bike, like, we could look for other alternatives that would accomplish the same thing. The other reason that I heard that was compelling enough for me to really push me to the other, to the other side, and, and to, to, to think twice about this, was that there are, there are members of our community who, who, for different reasons regarding privilege, regarding class, would want to see less, would have concerns about profiling, racial profiling, or the different ways in which certain people could be targeted and others not. I don't think any of our current police officers would have an issue with, I have, we, I haven't, I haven't identified any of those issues right now, but there, if we want to promote a diverse community, I think that it would be best to look at other alternatives before bringing on a motorcycle cop.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Rule?
Yeah. For me, traffic safety is out of control in Ojai. We have a night sky, it scares me to drive, and I know the streets, and I know where the lights are, and I do not drive over the speed limit, but it's out of control here, there's too many moving parts, there are e-bikes going crazy, there's, you know, an immense amount of traffic that comes through Ojai in the morning commute, in the evening commute. We have, you know, weekend visitors who don't understand the dangers in, of driving downtown. We have tourists who don't understand the dangers of walking downtown. I, I, I think that we should give it a year and see what kind of control we can, and, and I know that, you know, control is a bad word, but, but people are getting hurt, you know, animals are getting hit, people don't feel safe. I don't know anyone who feels safe walking or biking in Ojai, and I just don't see another way to move that forward with any due haste. You know, all of these suggestions, maybe they work, maybe they don't, maybe people slow down, you know, it's the, the, if you're driving on creek and it's forty miles, and you get up to forty-five and you hit red, you go to forty-four where you're not red anymore, still way too fast. There are, there are, I would propose that we also think about ways that public works can work with this, but it's expensive, it's a heavy lift, you know, and I've been pulled over, and it's dang embarrassing. I mean, but guess what? I don't do it again. It's embarrassing, it's not embarrassing to see somebody, but, you know, to be pulled over is embarrassing, and you don't do it again. And everybody needs to be reminded, everybody needs to have a reality check on occasion. So, I, I, you know, if you get pulled over for speeding, well, you know, you shouldn't have been speeding, and maybe you won't next time. I don't, I don't, racial profiling, you know, we're such a homogeneous community, except for the folks that, you know, commute in and commute out. So, that, that's why I support this, I just don't see another way to do it. There's great intentions, but I don't, I don't see them as being successful. I think we need to have, we need to take a big step, and perhaps after a year, we could rein that in once we see what's going on. So, that's why I support it. It doesn't look like the votes are here. You know, I, I don't see cops who are enforcing speeding laws and safety protocols as a dangerous addition to our community. I think the chief was very right when she said we're a small town, but we have some big, we have some big-town safety issues, and we need to deal with them. I hear it over and over, we need to deal with them, and this, to me, is the most efficient and effective, although expensive, way to do that. So, I'm, I'm going to support the hiring, and I think our city manager once told us that, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that studies, you know, they don't do what needs to be done, and, and maybe I'm remembering that incorrectly, but we need action, we need to, we need enforcement around safety protocols. It's really simple. E-bikes are outrageously out of control, so.
If I could just jump in, I'll take that opportunity, if you don't, I'm sorry, Mayor, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
I think what I might have said, well, or wanted to say was, you know, rules, rules that are in place without any mechanism to enforce them are kind of useless, and, you know, we can slap up signs, we can do studies, we can do road diets, we can, but if, if people know that they don't really need to adhere to them, you're just not going to see a behavior change. And I've worked in six, six different cities in California, some with contract police, some with in-house police, and, you know, if you want to target behavior change, this is what you do, and the chief said it, I think, pretty well. We, it's, it's, the number of officers that we have assigned to patrol is probably the right amount for the community of our size, but if you're caught, you know, the first obligation is to respond to a call for service. And if you've got two thousand calls for service, you're really not going to be able to be parked on the highway or the road and, and, you know, have your radar gun out and doing track and traffic enforcement, you just, you do not have the bandwidth, especially if backup is needed, et cetera. So, having somebody who has that luxury to really target what they're doing is going to change behavior, and again, if you're, you know, I think this, we all should be driving the speed limit, we all should be not distracted, we all should not be intoxicated, all those things. So, you know, I, I, I've always seen the men and women in khaki and green as our friends, not our foes, and they, they show me that every day, but I'm not the policymaker. But I will tell you that bringing back other items to try to address the same, same issue will just not be very impactful, and you're not going to see aspirational measures be effective. Thank you.
Could I make a substitute motion? I'm sorry.
I'm going to just make a comment right now. First, I want to thank and echo Councilmember Lang's thanks to Chief Newman, because we really appreciate you and all the hard work you've done on this, and, and your insights. I want to echo Teal Rose's comment that the, the speed signs, the monitoring signs do actually work, do cause people to slow down, and that, of course, safety is our number one priority, and that's what we want to do. I think Bill Miley's letter was very thoughtful about collecting data, Anita Cram also echoed that, and doing more traffic studies, because I do think there will be a community backlash. I think, I've spoken to a lot of people about this, and, and people, a lot of people just don't want that, and people do want us to care for our trees and swift climate action. So, the reason I made that motion was because I think that we, we have an alternative that has been presented, that, and that we should use it and, and see how that works at this point. So, Councilmember Rule, you wanted to make another motion?
Yeah, I wanted to make a.
It's my turn, isn't it?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, Councilmember.
Can I make a substitute motion?
And then, Councilmember Francina?
Then I can have my turn after.
Of course you can, you can have your turn now, Susan, if you would like it. You know, it's quite all right. My substitute motion is, is that we, that we move forward with the recommendation with a year trial period, and that we look to use some of the data that we find from the actual on-the-ground traffic enforcement to, to illuminate our decision-making. That, that's, you know, let, let's see what's actually happening on the ground, let's see what a traffic enforcement officer can do, and let's see if we actually make a dent in the safety, you know, in the safety that, in, in safety for, for the citizens. So, a, a year's trial period, and with, with collecting that data, as well as, you know, other kinds of data that we can collect. That would be my substitute motion.
Second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes. I, I, I think you're taking the cart before the horse. I think we should do everything else, and then, if that fails, then we bring a traffic officer on board. First of all, I want to remind everyone that it's been a couple of years that we've been discussing a twenty-five mile per hour citywide speed limit, that's another good reason why we need to speed monitors, that would just calm, nobody would be confused, they wouldn't be going up, well, they might in the beginning, but, you know, we, it would, the, the speed limits in this town, where it says thirty, all of those thirty-five miles per hour, were, were not designed for the level of traffic we have now, for the size of the SUVs, you know, it should be twenty-five miles per hour on all residential streets, and, and of course, through our, our downtown core. Then, we haven't even begin to have the proper infrastructure that sends the message that we respect bicyclists, okay? Lot of people here, drivers in this town, still look on, you know, when I speak about education, it's not just the people on bicycles, it's the drivers. We're in the third generation of drivers that never, many of whom never used a bicycle for transportation. They're not street savvy. So, we have, our job is to, if, if, you know, it's, it's, when, when you do education, it includes educating people about the legal, that a bicycle can legally be in the traffic lane. All over Ventura, you will see signs that says bicycles may use full lane. I've never seen that sign in Ojai yet, and obviously, a bicycle would prefer to be in a bike lane, and, and they will go over to the right if it's not littered with cars and, and trash cans. But we're a city that hasn't kept up with the popularity of bicycles, you know, we're only going to see an increase, we need to catch up with our infrastructure. We've got cars parked. Okay, and I know that's a topic for the next time this is on the agenda, thank you.
Great point. All right, we have a substitute motion from Councilmember Rule with a second. Could we have the, any other comments?
Yeah, I, I got a quick comment, and that is that, and this has, I think, been echoed by a few people, but I believe that our, the, the reason why soft advisory measures are not likely to be effective, is that I think that there's a whole lot more, you know, belligerent and intentional violation of the laws. So, it doesn't matter if you educate people better as to what the speed limit is, if they want to speed, they're going to speed. And I, and I'll just, you, you know, use an example, I've heard a number of stories about what's going on in Oakview right now with the new, you know, traffic diet that they created there, and there are people, you know, very belligerently using the bicycle lanes to pass people, because they just don't care. And I think we need to send a message, you know, to our community that they need to care about traffic laws. That's all I'll say.
Okay, well, on that note, we will have a roll call on Councilmember Rule's substitute motion.
Yes, Mayor, we have a motion by Councilmember Rule with a second by Mayor Protem Whitman to approve the item two as recommended, with a one-year trial period, and direct staff to return with collected data and report. Roll call. Councilmember Rule?
Yes.
Mayor, Councilmember Francina?
No.
Mayor Protem Whitman?
Yes.
Councilmember Lang?
No.
Mayor Sticks?
No.
Motion fails.
All right, we will return to my motion, the second motion?
Yes.
May, may I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
This can be brought back anytime, right? The issue of the.
Yes.
Not necessarily, no.
Yeah, if it's, if it's a straight revote on the exact same item, it'd have to come back on a future agenda with the mayor, or two putting it back on the agenda.
But clarify why, it's, it's those who voted against it would have, those, okay, those who voted in, sorry, you can't just come back?
No, no, yeah, let me clarify my question. Six months from now, if we, by some miracle, really improved our infrastructure, if we have serious education, we've, we're licensing the e-bikes, we're cracking down on the, on the, just, there are so many kids that are obeying the law, you know, and if we do everything else, even six months, we're seeing the need for more enforcement, it can be brought back. Is that correct?
It'll be a new council in six months.
I, I.
New council, yes, a new.
It can be brought back.
The new council creates an opportunity to bring it back, along with the other adjustments, as you stated, both of those.
To me, three hundred and twenty-five thousand is nothing to sneeze at, I, I see other ways to use that money.
Roll call, please, Weston?
Yes, Mayor, we have a motion by Mayor Sticks with a second by Councilmember Francina to not approve the item two recommendations. Roll call. Mayor Protem Whitman?
No.
Councilmember Rule?
No.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Lang?
Yes.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Motion passes, three to two.
All right, we, we will move on to the remainder of public communications, and then we'll take a break after that. Any public comments? Weston?
Excuse me, Mayor, no comment cards for item three, and let's extend.
Oh. This, this was the second round. Madam Mayor, I think there were no continued public comments.
And no, no general public comments on Zoom?
That is correct, sorry for my mistake.
Okay. So, shall we go on? Council, would you like to go on to number three, take a break? Somebody? Number three. Okay, let's move on to number three. Resolution appointing a voting delegate in. Uh, resolution appointing a voting delegate and alternate vote-
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Our colleague needs a break.
Okay, all right, and we will take a short break, and then we will come back. And we will move on to item number three.
Well, the, the schools obviously have to be involved. And the school, yeah, yeah.
Welcome back, Mayor.
Okay, we're back. Um, let's go ahead and move on to item number three, discussion item number three, resolution appointing a voting delegate and alternate voting delegate to the 2024 League of California Cities Annual Conference. Is there a staff report?
Yeah, yes, Mayor, one moment, let's, uh- Give us, okay. Thank you, Mayor. Real short item here. Four of our five council members are going to the League of California Cities Conference in October in Long Beach. As part of the conference every year, there are matters that the league brings before the, their General Assembly for positions to vote on. In order to do so, in order to be able to participate as a city, you have to come before your body and delegate, and, and sorry, designate who your voting delegate and alternate is going to be. And so that is what we are doing here this evening. So, straightforward, it's at the end of the conference. Oh, fun fact, you have to be there. So, all the way through the conference, it's the very last thing. So, some council members, you know, right, okay. That's it. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council?
Well, can we ask who wants to do what?
Well, let's, let's wait till discussion, but, um, any public comment on this, Weston?
No cards in house, Mayor, unless just extend that opportunity for Zoom participants to comment on item three. Standing by for a moment. No hands raising, so we'll move on. No, no comments.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, all right, let's move on to discussion. And, uh, to answer your question, Suzie, I would, I'd love to do it. I've done the last two conferences, one, the first one in Long Beach, and then last year in Sacramento, so I'm just putting that out there.
Well, seems as our mayor, you should do it.
I was actually going to make a motion that we, that we nominate you, Betsy.
Thank you, Rachel.
Yeah, I mean, it just seems like it would make sense for the mayor to be the representative.
Um, I, I'm certainly fine with that. I would, I would make a motion that, um, Councilmember Lang be the alternative, if you're going to be there, just simply because you are part of, you're on the policy committee. I mean, so it would make sense that you would have a voting, and if we need a second alternative, I would make a motion that, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Whitman be the second alternative, as I cannot guarantee that I will make it to the end, the bitter end, and, um, you know? So, that's how I would go with that one.
Okay.
Okay, is there a second for that motion?
I'll second, oh, go ahead.
And I, I promise I will stay to the very end, which I have for the last two years.
My dog might call me home, and there's just nothing I can do about that.
Okay. All right, well, any final comments before the roll call? I appreciate your support and look forward to the conference with you. Okay, roll call, please, Mr. Chief Deputy City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, and just to clarify, a motion by Rule, uh, second by Councilmember Lang for Mayor to be the voting delegate with Councilmember Lang as the alternate, and if needed, Mayor Pro Tem Whitman as the second alternate. Roll call. Mayor Pro Tem Whitman?
Yes.
Councilmember Lang?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Councilmember Rule?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Wonderful. Thank you, colleagues, and, uh, we will move on to item number four, the General Plan Contract Modification Update, Climate Action Plan and Economic Diversification Element, Tourism, Tourism Management. Uh, is there a staff report? Mr. City Clerk?
Yes, uh, Madam Mayor, uh, Mr. Seibert, our Community Development Director, will be delivering that. Lucas, take it away.
Thank you. Yes, the item before you tonight is, is not to vote on or asking for a vote on the economic diversification element. Instead, you took action on that in February of this, of this year. But instead, what we're bringing forward is a modification to the budget. In terms of the items that you, as a council, had asked for when we had this discussion in February, uh, we've gone back, ran those numbers in terms of the different technical studies that we would be seeing as a part of this element, um, and the, the number is great, greater than what we originally saw in February. And because of that, it's come back before this body, um, for consideration. And at this point, staff is recommending that, uh, council direct, uh, the city manager to enter into an agreement, a modification, taking that budget amount from $55,000, which was the estimate, and I do caution with an estimate, because it didn't have all the technical studies that, and more particularly, the, um, the gap analysis that has been included with this as well, uh, which is an important feature if we are looking at, um, all of the pieces to this puzzle, uh, that we were talking about back in February. So with that, it's, it's a budget modification of $55,000 to $150,000, $150,000 as a part of the general plan update. Um, with that, uh, if the council has any questions, I could certainly answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Seibert.
I have a question.
Any questions from council? Uh, Councilmember Rule?
Yeah, so, um, you know, this all looks very, very informative and valuable if it is indeed good systematic data collection and, you know, I mean, it, it's worth it if what you get is quality work. It's not worth it if what you get is not quality work. And I'm trying to understand, um, so I'm asking you, you know, in your professional opinion, will this, will these studies give us what we need to really be, to, to put the pieces together, to put the puzzle together? So-
Yes.
Okay.
In the, in a short order answer, yes. I think it's also important to, to note that it's more than just, uh, there was a tourism, certainly there's a tourism concern, which is a tourism, tourism management piece to this puzzle. There's also the understanding, um, and what, what the consultant, which is Lisa Wise Consulting, is going to be doing, which is a market analysis, which is kind of like the baseline of what we're talking about here, that kind of helps to put the pieces together. The, the gap analysis that has been included with this as a part of the proposal helps to bridge the gap, um, for any of that business, um, engine pieces to that puzzle. And then obviously, the last piece is, um, the piece that, that really is probably the key, keystone to the whole thing, which is, um, looking at short, short-term rentals and other pieces that, that begin to take away from what Ojai has been known for, for the last hundred years plus. So, in terms of addressing all of those pieces and wrapping it all into a bow within this, this draft element that we're going to be working on, um, closely with Lisa Wise, um, consulting- that we're going to be working on closely with Lisa Wise Consulting, all of those studies, I think, are important. If you take one of those out, I think you're starting to lose the fabric of what you're, I think you're, you're trying to achieve here. Okay?
Right, so, so the whole is greater than the sum of the parts, really, when you think about it. Okay. Yeah, okay, I'm, I'm not going to worry about methodology, and I'm not going to delve deeply into that, but.
And, and looking at, also, if I could also say, I've, I've taken a look at some of Lisa Wise's work recently. When I say recently, there was some work that was done for Slow, San Luis Obispo. I think that work was done with a lot of quality and emphasis. And I think it's, it's addressed the concerns through Slow. Those concerns aren't the same concerns that we have here. So obviously, they were, they were looking to address concerns that were, that were derived during their whole campaign of understanding the roles, rules, responsibilities that they are being tasked with, that plan that they put together. So here, it's an element that will live within the general plan. And whenever we go through updates and revisions, that's one of the elements that we could be, be updating and revising throughout the year.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Lang, and then Mayor Pro Tem.
Just a, a question on the economic diversification. I didn't notice anything in here. I, I think we have some real opportunities for the, for the Bryant Circle area, for potentially attracting other businesses or like recruiting businesses. Is, is it within the scope of this work to include something like that? That would, that would consider kind of opening up our, our possibilities in terms of, of economic diversification?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Do you know what particular study will do that?
Yeah.
Or at least provide us some insight into that, and that's the gap analysis.
Okay.
That's the piece to the, to the puzzle. It's something that we've added into that, knowing that, that this body is particularly concerned with the future of that particular area.
Great, awesome, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, so I was going to disclose this in any event, but I spoke to Lisa Weiss today. And my concerns were, you know, both primarily what Councilmember Rule mentioned, which is, you know, explaining to me what exactly it is that we're getting here. And one of the things that she emphasized was that the scope of work that they do for us is very malleable. And she did go through a number of different communities that they've done projects for that are, you know, small tourist destinations. And so I think we have.
Mayor Pro Tem, can I interrupt?
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to discuss or argue, but that was, you know, detail that I got from them that I thought I should disclose.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions before we go to public comment? Okay, all right, Mr. City Clerk? Any public comments on this item?
Yes, Mayor, thank you for waiting. We have raised hands only on Zoom. First, we'll have Bill Miley, followed by Teal.
I don't, you can hear me.
Go ahead, Mr. Miley.
Okay, you can hear me, right?
Yes, please proceed.
Good, okay. I have seen inventory lists that show what the services and the retail businesses should be in small communities. And I ran across one that says, you are 50 businesses that any, any small community should have. Now, we ought to do that. Maybe that's the gap issue that Lucas spoke about. Okay, it seems like tourism impact on our community is through vehicle number. There are local movement and parking, greenhouse gas also. It would seem important to consider in this study roles of off-street parking, city parking, that would be available to take cars off the street right away where the people wouldn't generate greenhouse gases driving around. So I would hope the consultants would look at that. Also, it seems to me that maybe having a digital board, quote, for people to locate places they want to go using AI to answer questions, a town display and a map showing trees, rubs of the valley, birds, all of the biology of the valley, geology that make us unique. So I think that would be really important. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill.
Next, we'll have Anita Cram in-house.
Thank you, Weston. So I'm going to reiterate some of what Bill Miley just said. And I find the missing data in this is the connection between tourism and climate effects in our valley. I think that we don't understand what the carbon footprint is of the tourism that comes here. We don't understand what the water usage is. We don't understand, as he talked about, the biology of the ecosystem that we live in. We don't understand the effects on what is a lot of oak woodland habitat that we occupy, what the tourism effects are in this. And we can't even begin to mitigate climate change if we don't understand what's contributing to it and, and associated issues. So I think it's really important that we don't do guesswork on this and that the data be included in this on what the effects of tourism are on the climate change and the effects to the habitat that we live in. Thank you.
Thank you, Anita.
We have one more raised hand on Zoom, Mayor. We have Teal. Teal, you have the floor.
Thank you. Teal Rowe, Ventura County. And I sent in a letter, because this was on the agenda last meeting. It was dated August 26th, my letter. I just, I don't know if you got it or not. I'm wondering about the cost of this added $100,000. I'm wondering if the climate and tourism can't be spliced into one of the above categories of the contract that, what paid, the city paid $699,000 in October of 2020. So that's almost three quarters of a million dollars. And wanting another $100,000 now, how that, the gap, the baseline and the STR issues cannot be somehow spliced into the land use element, circulation element, housing element, safety element, environmental justice element, and updates to other elements for consistency, compliance with the state law, which the original contract promised. I think that that's way too much money to add to this, because I also think there's people in the community, as Anita Cram just stated, that know the community. And to remember that our general plan is an award-winning general plan, unique, and to follow its stated plan. Why spend $100,000 more than $699,000 that was spent in October of 2020? I highly recommend that you do not vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Teal.
That's the close of public comments for item four.
Okay, we will move on to discussion. Who would like to begin?
Sure, I'll, I'll start. So part of, part of the interest in having a general plan element that addresses tourism was the comment that I hear maybe the most frequent in my discussions with other Ojai residents. And that comment is, I never go downtown. Or never go downtown on the weekend. And I thought that as opposed to just treating that as a fact of life, why don't we figure out how to adjust to the tourism influences we have on the weekend? And weekends get, getting pretty long. But let's, let's study and understand. Number one, what is it that people hate about going downtown? And can we mitigate that? And, and can we figure out how to live with tourism? You know, coexist with tourism, because it's our financial driver. And then the other part that's kind of been merged into this is the fact that Ojai is a bedroom community. And if, if you don't know what that means, it, it means that people predominantly go to some other community to work, and then they come back to Ojai for a living. And we're not, we don't all do that, but a huge percentage of us do that. And nearly 20 years ago, our, you know, prior city council decided that one of the things that we could do to potentially, you know, modify that, have more people stay here in the valley to work, was to develop the Bryant Light Industrial Zone. And the idea is that if we want a household, you know, sustainer, somebody, you know, somebody who's supporting a household here in Ojai to stay in Ojai, we got to find some jobs that pay more than tourist industry wages. And that was the thought process behind starting the Bryant Circle area. And so I'm not sure exactly how those two concepts, well, let me finish that. We adopted that, and then I'm not sure what we've done since then other than to have that zone available. And it hasn't, we do have some, we do have some businesses in that area that are paying, you know, substantially higher wages than tourism industry jobs. But we haven't really done much to try to figure out who can we attract, who can, you know, provide those types of jobs to residents of Ojai. And so the, the proposal is that we're going to have Lisa Weiss analyze that. And her firm has done this for other communities. I did, I, I do read through their, the reason that I called Lisa Weiss was because I kind of read through their plan. And I was concerned that what they were proposing sounded similar to what I was interested in, but not necessarily matching up. And in my conversation with her, she satisfied me that whatever it is that we want to accomplish through the plan, they've got the background to do the legwork, first to figure out who, you know, who we are, where we are, what are, what's the data that we have? What are our needs? And then to, you know, propose a strategy to address that. One of the things that's been raised tonight is, well, you know, what about the other parts of the general plan? And those, those are all important, the, the general plan and the independent parts, they're all supposed to work together. And I guess, and I, I will say that I've spent a lot of time, this goes back to being on Planning 20 years ago, reading the 1997 general plan. And I highly recommend that to anybody who lives in Ojai, because it's a very good discussion of who we are and what we value. And it was an award-winning general plan. So I guess my final comment is that, and I'm going to be, you know, supporting that we, we undertake this, you know, additional expense. I want the city, where we've improved our communications significantly in the last six months, but I want every city resident, you know, that, that cares about the community to make sure they participate in all of the aspects of the general plan that we're going to be working through over the next several months. And I, you know, I hope that as data collection begins, that, you know, we'll get the word out that you should be looking for, you know, your opportunity either to show up at a town hall or answer, you know, a questionnaire. And so my motion would be that we approve the recommendation.
I'll second it. And if, if I could.
Councilmember Lang?
Go ahead, go ahead.
So I was on the council when we did the 1997 general plan. And I have a question, Lucas, can, can, can we include an analysis of all the high-paying businesses that moved, that we lost? I mean, we lost three or four, off the top of my head, that were, that we, they couldn't expand. And what was it that kept them from expanding? Why couldn't we keep, keep them?
You're talking about from 97?
Just through the years, through the years, going all the way back to, I think, Altura Coffee, Lynda.com. I can't think of all of them off the top of my head. But, and, and what was the, what, the one BTS, what's it called? You know, the, all those, yeah. I'm sure that we can, we can find them, find out why did they leave? Why couldn't they expand?
So I don't know that I can necessarily guarantee that we can reach out to those individual businesses and do kind of a data analysis piece. But I can at least approach the question with Lisa Wise Consulting to see if there's something else that helps to kind of address the fight or flight scenario that's happening.
Yeah, it's not just attracting, it's keeping.
I think it's, I think it's, it's the bigger question versus the three or four that you're thinking of over the last one year.
Okay, thank you.
If I, if I could add just to that, I mean, as an alternative, if we can't reach out to those companies, you know, there are companies that are thriving. They're like Magic Hour. They just, this is my Magic Hour mug. You know, they, they just, oh, they just expanded and have a salon, a tea salon and a shop right there. But they're, they're doing it and paying high-paying jobs. And so I think, I think there are some real opportunities there to, to connect with people who are, who are making it work. So, so a couple of things I want to say. First of all, I am, I definitely am in favor of this. You know, it, I, I've been, I'm excited about the possibility of having a climate action plan. I think that will set this, set us a foundation for everything else that, that we, that we do. It communicates a lot about who we are and the character and what we care about of our community. I also am very excited about the economic diversification. One of the reasons why I think these two belong together is because so much of our budget comes, so much of our revenue comes from tourism. And this is, as Mayor Pro Tem Whitman said, this is something that, you know, that we hear a lot about, people not wanting to come downtown on the weekends, the traffic, safety, all these concerns that we've raised tonight. And strategizing ways of bringing economic diversification to our community, this is going to pay for itself, hopefully. And I'm also optimistic, when I heard you say that we could look at, at potentially, like, looking for, for solutions for recruiting businesses, attracting a business that would be, would offer high-paying jobs. We're going to have more residents here, we're going to have more housing here. And we need jobs here that are paying more than a living wage, that are good-paying jobs. jobs here that are paying more than a living wage, that are good-paying jobs for for the people who need it the most. Um so I just wanted to say that I won't, I won't take too much more, I won't take any more time, but I am very optimistic with what I see here. And I also, I didn't call uh Lisa Weiss, but I looked at the website and I um and and I, I, and so I do feel good about that choice. Um also in talking with members of the Climate Action Committee, uh you know, I, in previous conversations around a climate action plan, I do think it's beneficial for us to have an outside consultant working on this uh so that we can have that perspective. And I'm, and members of the Climate Action Committee would be involved with this, is that correct? Or are they, are they?
Members of the community will be.
Okay, great, excellent, thank you.
Members of the community.
Excellent, wonderful, thank you so much.
And there will be public workshops and so forth.
Wonderful, okay, thank you.
And I get one other comment, though, is that each element of the plan needs to be consistent with each other. So, you know, to the extent the climate um plan has goals, then the other elements of the plan need to harmonize with whatever that goal is.
Absolutely, I couldn't have said that better. Goals and policies need to be interwoven with each element, yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Rule?
Yeah, I mean, I I support this, you know, um for me, it all comes down to housing. It it all ends up with housing. Um if you don't have housing, you're not gonna get businesses to relocate. Our housing is all affordable housing down to, you know, unsheltered. So I'm I'm hoping that that will be a part of it. Um as far as, you know, short-term rentals and their uh, you know, impact, that has, that that to me just, it it's minimized by the idea of the lack of available housing. If you can't house your workers, you're not gonna open a business here. It's just that simple. So so I don't know if that is the elephant in the room or if they plan to deal with that, but once again, we don't have, even have updated numbers really about what our housing ecosystem is. And so, you know, that that was my red flag was they're gonna talk about short-term rentals. Well, yeah, that's important, but it's really minimal when you talk about the housing crisis that we have in Ojai. And that was a huge red flag for me because if that's what you're gonna pull out on housing is the effect of short-term rentals, you're you're really not talking about, you know, what the true issue is. But I'm assuming that they're gonna deal with that. You know, I also, I I hope that they will, you know. Once again, um people in my neighborhood don't mind going downtown on the weekends. They walk up and down my street, they're going downtown. So, you know, the other thing, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna harp, but a general plan that was written twenty-seven years ago is undoubtedly, award-winning or not, needs to be updated based on the last twenty-five years of what has happened economically. So we can tout it as award-winning, but we need something that's updated. And I'm hoping that this contract will give us the data that we need, um you know, to really figure out what's going on in our town. That's what I want. Like, we don't have the ability to do this, staff can't do it, so I'm assuming that we're hiring out to figure out exactly that, what is going on in this town, right? That's what I want to know. So, you know, I I I I'm trusting that, you know, that that I'm trusting staff to have done due diligence and chosen wisely on the uh the vendors that we've chosen. So I'm certainly in support of this, but and and I'm I'm hopeful that the community will participate and explain what they really need to know. So, yeah, there we go. Bingo.
Thank you. Well, um I'd like to thank our community development director, Lucas, thank you so much for working on this and bringing this forward. And I'm in support of this. I I'm also excited, as Councilmember Lang is, about our climate, climate action plan. Um and just to clarify for the community, the the tourism management is not about increasing tourism or the activity, it's about, as Anita Cram said, looking at the effects of tourism on on climate and habitat specifically. So I'm looking forward to getting that information. And um, you know, in terms of going downtown, just a a side note, when I was first elected, someone asked me if we could take it back to the eighties. Um as we know, that's not possible. Uh there have been a lot of changes in our life and in our culture, and I appreciate the the work that's being done now to look at, you know, what we do, given that the nature of life is change. Um I I I agree with Councilmember Lang that we need to encourage businesses on Bryant, so I look forward to hearing about that. And and uh Mayor Protem, um encouraging participation by the community. So everything we can do in terms of outreach and education to get more people involved to get their input. So with that, we um, any other final comments? We have a a motion and a second. Are we ready for the roll call?
I have a, just a final comment.
Councilmember Francina?
Yeah, uh it's it's a philosophical comment. You know, the world is is changing very, very quickly, and whatever we do now could be very quickly outdated. And unfortunately, our economic model is completely whackup, okay? So what, whoever is doing this, I don't know, uh you know, we can't, we don't want an economic plan that encourages consumerism. We want people to go to the thrift shop. We don't want them to shop at Amazon. More and more people are working remotely. We have a lot of people here who are, they're living uh in the arts, the writing arts, filmmaking and all of that. So that's part of the picture. If those people would just live in Ojai and contribute to the community and not just have a second week at home here, half our problems would be solved, you know? Like all these actors and et cetera, they could make great contributions to the community. But I I'll I'll vote for this, uh just to, and I hope for the best, but um the truth is, we can't keep on with the current economic plan. You know, when you say um, think globally, act locally, um you would see a whole different, uh you know, you you don't want an economy based on selling more junk, you know, mining economy that's based on mining. So I don't know what the answer is, but um, you know, consume less, that's part of the answer, and that's not good for the economy. Sorry.
On that, on that note.
On that happy note.
I I did wanna just, um I I forgot to mention that um that we are working on bringing fiber optic broadband to Ojai. So I think that that should be incorporated. I I don't know if Ms. Weiss would know that, um but that's gonna be a BFD as far as um, you know, economic development and uh the kinds of things that are available in Ojai. So I want to make sure that she's aware of that. You know, things go slowly, it's state, it's county, then it's city, but um it's moving forward. So I I I just wanna um make sure that that that's part of it and she understands that we're up in our game.
Thank you. All right, let's have a roll call.
Yes, Mayor. We have a motion by Mayor Protem Whitman with a second by Councilmember Lang to approve item four as recommended. Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Rule?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Whitman?
Yes.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Councilmember Lang?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Wonderful. All right, well, let's move on to item number five, distribution of fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five budget surplus funds. Is there a staff report, Mr. City Manager?
Uh yes, Mayor, it's actually going to be coming from your assistant city manager, Mr. Alameda.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So tonight before the city council is the distribution of three point four million dollars in surplus funds. So if we go back to just a few months ago, when the council went through the annual budget process, you had a set of three budget meetings, um all of which was very good news. The city council on June twenty-fifth adopted a general fund budget of approximately sixteen million. It also included sixteen million dollars separate in a general fund reserve. So what that means is if the city were to take in no money for one fiscal year, we could still operate municipal operations for one full year. Um so a hundred percent reserve level. And outside of that, there is three point four million dollars of general fund money um that the council could allocate. At the time, they asked the city manager to come back at a future meeting with a recommended allocation of that three point four million dollars, and that's what the discussion is tonight. Um so staff has given this um some thought, and we have a number of items that we have proposed be funded with that three point four million dollar um excess funding. So we'll talk about those, which are general fund items. And then later in the report, I'm gonna touch on two special fund sources. So general fund monies can be spent on any governmental purpose, there's no restrictions. Special funds are restricted in some nature that they can only be used for certain types of items, gas tax, street resurfacing, um what have you. So there's some other outside that three point four million, there's some special fund allocations we'd recommend making as well. Um and I would note before I get into general fund, the um HVAC electrification project that the city council asked be funded, um we found that is, meets the criteria of measure C, so that's why we're not gonna talk about in the general fund, but when we get general to this measure C, we'll talk about it. So of the three point four million dollars of the general fund money, um to give the council kind of an understanding of how we came to think about that and how it was prioritized, we did a very basic ranking of the things that we're bringing before the council tonight. Um so we established three tiers. Um tier one, the items falling within that category, um support a core operational need of the city, um or already have been approved um by council action at one of the meetings since we adopted the budget. Tier two are ones that aren't core operational needs, but if they were funded, it would either create a cost savings for the city by putting money in those categories or create uh operational efficiencies for the city. And then tier three are things, that's not necessarily that they're lower items, but they're really items that are policy decisions for the city council. So staff prefers not to really rank those, but that would be for the council's consideration as a policy question. So those are not truly tier three, but just unranked items for policy discussion. Um so the sum total of all these, the exact dollar amount that we have to allocate is three point three eight five million. Um so of our recommended allocation, um we're just shy of that at three point seven seven million, so there's a little surplus still of about fifteen million, we just go back in the general fund reserve, fifteen thousand, I'm sorry. Um so I'll run through these, um um most of these are things that we've discussed before, but I'll just give a brief uh synopsis of what it is. If you have any questions, you can can ask me at the end. Um so in tier one, what we're looking to do is the the top item there is set aside one million dollars in an operating fund. And what that would be is for the future cabin village, wherever that is, we'd have a set aside of one million dollars for future operations. In all likelihood, it looks like there would be outside funding sources to support the operations from either the state, county or both. Um but this set aside would ensure that we could operate it for multiple years. And it's also important to note that now we are looking at using city property. And if you recall in the ERF grant, we had a set aside of about one point one million dollars to purchase property. So that would likely also be allocated towards operations. So at the end of the day, we'd have a set aside of just over two million dollars to operate the future cabin village. The second item is one that has already been approved by council, and that's the extension of the security contract for the onsite security here at the Kent Hall lot. Um so the security is here at nights and on weekends. Um that was an action that the council previously took um for two hundred forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, and that took the contract through February twenty-eighth. It was through February twenty-eighth, and the thinking was um if the ERF grant wouldn't cover the balance, we could have that discussion at mid-year, um that would happen right around then. The next item would be taking that contract through June thirtieth, which would be the end of the current fiscal year for an extra hundred and twenty-five thousand. If we were to learn there's another funding source, we certainly could use that and bring that forth, but this would just be providing coverage through the end of the fiscal year. Um item three is two hundred and fifty thousand for improvements um to the Boyd Gem uh for recreation. And then on the report that is in your packet, there are a few changes, which I'll note, and this is one of them. Um there's an IT security assessment item. Um since publication, we got a more solid proposal, so that's actually gonna be fifty thousand that's noted on your cover sheet. Item five is doing a site survey in phase one environmental in the Lower Public Works Yard of twelve thousand, likely also could be funded through the ERF grant, but we do wanna set that aside, um should that not be an eligible cost. So those are the tier one items. Going down into tier two, um this would be working with our public relations firm that produced the newsletter that you all saw. This would be to bring them in to do a branding and style guide, so all city communications would have a consistent look and feel um across all our platforms, is that social media, email, press releases, marketing materials. Um it would have a standardized look, font, color. Um it's a pretty effective tool to across all departments to have a standardized look of what things coming from the city looks like. Um so that has a cost of fourteen thousand nine hundred. Um the next two are items, they're they're both liability items, and this relates to pension benefits. Um it's other post-employment benefits. There's two, so the first one is miscellaneous. So this is for um the cost of the pension and retiree um medical benefits for city employees. Um I'll get into a little more of this. The second one is for public safety, and this is a legacy item from when Ojai did have an in-house PD department. So obviously, that's not an ongoing one, but there is still a liability carried from that. The contract with the Ventura County Sheriff's Department, we don't have the obligation to pay into their pension benefits, that's something that we get the benefit of in the contract model. These numbers, um every year, calipers shows what your liability is, and most cities operate that you pay for the real cost of that as it goes on. So effectively, what the real costs are is what's the cost of the retirees, the active retirees, healthcare and and pension costs? So it's kind of a pay-as-you-go model. The numbers, so overall, it's about three point seven million dollars, um which sounds like a lot, but that builds in the assumption if all your employees were to retire today. It's something that would never happen, but it is shown as liability. But the benefit of making what's called a lump sum payment is you do pick up some interest savings in in doing that, and it also reduces your liability as well. It's something that's helpful. Um if you were to take on a massive project, something like redoing all the storm drains in the city and you had to go out for a bond, having the smaller liability would help you. Um so those areas are ones that we're also bringing forth. Another one is a a small item, the SCAG annual dues. Wasn't budgeted. Uh the Ojai Valley Land Conservancy, this would be a contribution towards a surface parking lot. Um those are the tier two items. And then the unranked items, and again, these were items that are policy uh decisions for the council. Um two hundred and fifty thousand for the native plant uh nursery expansion efforts of the um, I'm sorry, it's the Rewild Ojai Native Plant Nursery Expansion with the Ojai Valley Land Conservancy. Um that's something that Ben's been in discussions on. And then finally would be a set aside uh for a future property acquisition fund that doesn't currently exist. Um but what this would do is you would set aside or designate money um for the acquisition of real property. So that could be for open space or a site for if you wanted to do a workforce housing project, but it's helpful to have in place um for a couple of reasons. When a a parcel does come available that you are interested in purchasing, you already have a built- When a a parcel does come available that you are interested in purchasing, you already have a built set aside ready to go. Um, also if there's situations in which there potentially could be assistance with grant funding if it were an open space parcel. It shows the city is committed to it. And if you're in a situation that you might need matching funds to submit an application, you already have it set aside.
Want to catch the uh, Green Coalition item and the Arada changes?
I'm sorry. Let me flip back to the cover page.
I'm looking at the latest.
Yeah, so the agenda item has been updated. Um, let me just kind of cover all of them. There's effectively four changes um, that were made and they're offsetting. So there's effectively eighty six thousand dollars being cut out and eighty six thousand dollars being added through the four items. Um, so the one item being added is the Ojai Valley Green Coalition. Um, this would be a new allocation of seventy two thousand dollars. The item being modified is the I T security assessment for an additional fourteen thousand dollars. So combined, that's an extra eighty six thousand. And then we're offsetting that by reducing the O P E B contribution for the safety by seventy eight thousand. And the general fund reserve set aside by eight thousand. So they it's eighty six additional and eighty six thousand less. So those were the changes to the published staff report that are on the cover sheet. So that incorporates the general fund recommendations. Uh, the special fund recommendations affect the T D A transit fund and also measure C. And I'll go through those briefly. So the T D A fund, what we're asking to do there is allocate um, five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. For the purchase of a new trolley. It will probably take longer than this fiscal year to get, but we'd like to allocate the money if. If some miraculous um, method, we were able to get one quicker. Um, as a small agency, we really can't buy one. We have to piggyback on a larger transit agency's contract. Um, there's only a few folks that manufacture these and they usually have so many slots for large agencies. So if someone's uh, position became open, we can contract on that. So that set aside would be five hundred and seventy thousand dollars for an electric trolley. So that's the one T D A one, and that would simply come out of the undesignated fund balance that is there. Um, the other four items all deal with measure C. Um, the first is for the purchase of an all-electric passenger van. So the council did approve this in the budget. Um, under a state contract, you actually approved the state contract at the last meeting. Um, when we spoke to the dealership, uh, we were looking at two thousand twenty-three model since which they've all sold out of. So we are now going to the two thousand twenty-four model, which has an extra cost. So this is just a backfill of that extra and twelve thousand five hundred. Um, out of measure C. The next one is the HVAC mechanical systems. This is the electrification project that we talked about. So when it was discussed during the budget hearings, it was the three hundred and fifty six thousand dollars. Um, so the public work staff has reached out to some firms that do these type of mechanical assessments. And to get started to look at all our facilities, um, it's going to be about four hundred and four thousand. So the ask is to take two hundred and four thousand out of measure C reserves. To fund that, and then the other two hundred thousand. The council had appropriated two hundred thousand out of measure C um, for a recreation facility improvement. Since the budget was adopted, Matt Davis and his staff learned that they were successful in attaining a state grant through state parks. To pay for that two hundred thousand dollar project. So we would shift that two hundred thousand that was for a roof replacement into the mechanical systems. Is this cutting in and out or? Okay. All right, I use yours. And then the fourth item is a purchase for Public Works of an all-electric S U V. Uh, again, the contract came in a little higher than what we initially asked for, so this would be an extra twelve thousand to cover that. This item was approved also at the last council meeting along with the electric passenger van. And then finally is the potential purchase of an additional all-electric S U V. Um, the fleet is aging. We have a number of vehicles from the mid and late nineties. Um, in the last month, we've had two fail. Um, so this would be a backup if we had another one fail. So this is replacing um, gas-powered vehicles and equipment with all-electric ones. Um, so those are the asks of council and I would be happy to answer any questions. And a number of these um, Ben has a lot more information on than I do. So you may need to answer some of the questions.
Thank you, Mr. Assistant City Manager. Very detailed. Much appreciated. Any questions from council? Uh, council member Rule.
Um, yeah, so uh, gosh, on page five of six, I guess we were, this is recommended special fund allocations, although I think I have. Um, probably other questions, but um, given that we're doing a, so this is about item two. Citywide HVAC equipment assessment and electrification project. Allocate four hundred and four thousand for the assessment and to begin work on obtaining an engineer's estimate. And specifications for replacement. Um, I don't hear in that four hundred and four thousand dollars that there is replacement. What I hear is that we are assessing and beginning work to obtain an engineer's estimate for specifications for replacement. That seems like a lot of money for an evaluation.
It's more than that, and if I could maybe take a moment and ask Ms. Palmer to join us. Give us a moment.
Mr. City Manager, I don't believe I see Ms. Palmer.
Okay, well, it briefly, when we, when the council approved the budget, you may recall that there was a allocation of about three hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. Uh, for the electrification of city facilities effort. And at the time, we um, opine that that would probably be inadequate for the entire effort. We estimate that it probably might cost north of a million dollars to completely go through and replace all of the equipment. So it's going to be a lot of design, um, some engineering, some additional ancillary work that goes with. You know, doing that in an older building. So this is a portion of of the funding, but you're going to have to portion still more, as crazy as that sounds, probably.
So we're looking at a million dollars to evaluate and replace.
Well, that'd be for the design build, so it it that's the total effort roughly is.
Yeah, the design, yeah, 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 yeah. But and and so what we're talking about is four hundred and four thousand dollars for. As I said, to an engineer's estimate and specifications, not replacement or um, I'm just trying to.
Actually.
I guess really what you need to know is it's going to cost a million dollars.
Yeah.
And and however you parcel that out, whenever you parcel that out.
Certainly will, having gone through this recently. But it's just a little bit more in the engineering. There's one system that's close to failure. That's planned to be replaced sooner, and that's here at the city hall facility.
Okay, so that is included in the four hundred and four thousand dollars.
Correct, but this one come near, close to covering all city facilities. But there's one that I understand is near failure.
Okay, so it's it's assessment and engineer's estimate and replacement of one that is failing, but not replacement of all. We still going to have another five hundred thousand, give or take.
Also, my understanding is there's also access to a a grant. Um, through the California Power Alliance of a quarter of a million dollars that will help us in this effort once we get to the replacement stage as well.
That, are you assuming that that is a, just a, you apply for it, you get a grant? Or there it's an, you apply for it and they evaluate whether or not you should get it? In other words.
Just like all grants, they aren't automatic.
Okay, right, so it's not, you know, it's not a slam dunk.
Nope.
We might get it, we might not get it. Okay, um, and and the reason that I bring this up is, is that we have just um, allocated a lot of money for a climate action plan. And I'm wondering, you know, how this will play into that and would like to make sure that it is integrated into that. Um, and that it doesn't become part of a gap in a gap analysis. Um, you know, I I it seems really expensive to me, but of course, everything seems really expensive. But um, because we just don't have that many buildings. I mean, it's not like.
Well, it's a little deceptive if I can jump in, because remember, just here on your city hall campus, you actually have three distinct buildings here alone. So we also have Sarzati Community Center, which is a fairly large uh, building. Other things belong to us too, like the sheriff station, so yeah, public works.
Did not know with the sheriff station.
Yeah.
Oh, hello.
Right, so we we we're small but mighty and, you know, the museum building belongs to us, so.
It it would also brings up the question about um, Sarzati that I that I'd like to speak to is that um, from what I understood, we got a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. From the state and to for the multi uh, purpose courts. But we decided to roll that into upgrading an HVAC system at uh, Boyd Center. Um, so. I'm I'm confused because we also have two hundred thousand dollars being allocated for Sarzati, even though we have six hundred and fifty thousand. That um, we have hanging around that the state is allowing us to plug and play where we need to, correct?
So I think, you know, on the general topic, and this is something that we we're planning to bring back to you. It's it's a little complicated with the comprehensive um, electrification of all city facilities effort. There's grant monies involved, there's some moving around. And what we'd like to do is just at a future council meeting, bring back a picture of how this is all going to work together. We're also going to be asking you to um, allow us to go out for a request for proposal, pro request for proposal for a design build. Effort for that, so there's a lot going on. And if I can get Lindy on the line, she can better explain this than I am. She's having difficulties logging in.
Yeah, well, I'm happy to um, have it brought back and clarified. Um, we don't, you know, I I think it's late hour and my brain might not follow. But just to say that as as I look at it, there are a lot of holes that I don't, that I'm not getting, basically. There's a lot of connections I I'm not making, but I'm I'm happy to have that conversation at a later date so that all of that comes together. And I'm sure that it will. I'm not in any way suggesting that it wouldn't or doesn't. I'm sure it does. I just um, don't have that working for me right now.
Understood. Yep.
Any other questions from council?
Yeah.
Um, well, I was just going to ask, so to council member Rules' point. Um, there there do, there does seem to be a lot of, a lot of question. I I'm I'm having more questions talking about this and and listening to some of the responses. Have it, has there been any movement? Uh, I know we've talked about a budget committee meeting, a budget committee um, before. Um, but has there been any movement of around that or have we involved them, anyone from that committee in this?
No, so the the budget committee is an action item coming back for you guys to consider. You you don't have a fully constituted budget committee. You need to take some council action to do that. So at the next meeting, there's an item to reconstitute that if you want to. You need to appoint an additional community member and a council member to have a fully constituted committee. The other thing is we'd like to bring back what that committee was designed to do. There there's a policy that calls for it. It's actually the fiscal policy committee. It's not the budget committee, kind of morphed into that. But your policy actually just calls for a fiscal policy committee, which is more of a. Uh, you know, what, what are your investments and 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 uh, that type of thing? Less of a budget oversight. You could make it a budget oversight committee if you wanted to, but that's not what your policy initially created.
And a discussion of those options will be that agenda item coming at the next meeting. How we got to what we have now and the difference between what we have in the books and what has existed in practice. And most importantly, what the council would like going forward.
I look forward to that discussion.
Mayor Protem, did you have a question?
Yeah, um. So I am a little bit confused about. Which of these items? We've already had hearings concerning and said, let's allocate these funds. As opposed to things that are new. And and it's a little bit hard to. It's a little bit hard to grapple with, you know, just how much we're spending. Um, but I but I certainly don't want to reverse any decision that we've made. Um, but I want to make, you know, smart decisions about our financial future. So is. Is there an easy way to go through the list and say, okay, you guys have already said you want to spend this?
I can easily do that. There's only five.
Okay, good.
So in the general fund area, there are two um, that were previously approved by the council. The on-house security contract through February twenty eighth was approved meeting before last. The I T security assessment was approved at the last meeting for thirty-six thousand, but it's going to be fifty thousand. In the general fund area, it's just those two. Um, on the following page in the special fund items, three of those have previously been approved. Two in the base budget. The E V passenger van purchase was appropriated and then the purchase contract was approved at the last meeting. This is making up the shortfall from what the uh, contract that was approved and what was budgeted. The HVAC mechanical, as we've discussed, the council approved that when they adopted the budget. At three hundred and fifty-six thousand and asked us to go find the money, which that's what we're doing here, plus the additional funds. Um, the all-electric Honda, that was also appropriated in the budget in the contract. Um, I'm sorry, that was approved in the budget to purchase. We have the contract that will be coming back at the next meeting, but the funding was appropriated. So it's just those five items that the council's previously taken action on.
May I ask, you're saying those were previously approved?
All five were previously appropriated in the budget. And then there have been contracts that have come back to approve them in uh, three of the scenarios.
I'm hoping when we hear from the public that I'll get more clarity on some of these items. Uh, item twelve, when I see two hundred and fifty thousand for donation to the Ojai Valley Land Conservancy. And then we see the Green Coalition, seventy-two thousand. I'd like a little better understanding of, I hope people will come to the podium and help us understand those figures.
And we do have council council member in the gender report a brief description on each one of those items in the narrative. If you if you look, so those are, those are briefly explained, but we can also help you with those two if you wanted to ask questions on those now. We could do that.
No, I don't have any questions. I just hope that I want to hear from the public.
Um, I do have a question about the budget committee. Um, so from my recollection, currently we have four members on it. Steve Olson, our elected treasurer, treasurer Jeff Rains, our city manager, and uh, the mayor. So it it's still possible for us to have a meeting, for the mayor to call a meeting, correct?
Yes, I I think so. I mean, I I what we really wanted to do though, this has been dormant and we wanted to bring this back to you for for action. Um, you know, I think that would probably be a better approach so that we have a good understanding also from the council as to the scope of what the committee should be doing. You know, again, what we've determined from looking at the policy was initially set up to provide fiscal. Input as as far as like, you know, our investments and things like like that and and less of a budget oversight. So it's not really entirely clear to staff as to what it's supposed to be doing. So we wanted to come back to council to get that direction from you.
Okay, thank you. Any any other questions from council? Right, let's go ahead and move on to public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. First, we'll have Brian Akins, followed by Andy Gilman, and then Kathy Nolan.
Hello, council. Happy to be here tonight. Uh. I'm here as the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. Uh, I am proud to acknowledge that in thirteen days, I will have been on the commission for ten years. And enjoyed that. I appreciate all the support I've received over the years. Um, I am talking about tier two on allocations on item number six, style and branding guide. I looked at that and hearing now uh, Mr. Almeida's comments, it seemed like it was more in format. I looked at that and hearing now Mr. Almeida's comments, it seemed like it was more in format rather than in contact content. But in thinking about it in content, even to the point of the logos that will go forward, I talked about or I thought about putting that group in contact with our HBC Commissioner Walker, who knows all things historic and downtown and different things. I contacted Mr. Walker and he said he would be happy to help in any way he can in in coming up with the style in going forward and recognizing the historic nature of our beautiful town. The other thing I'd like to do, I attended many of the meetings that were involved in putting together the city campus master planning. And so I, including tours out to the to the barn for some and talking about the different things that are landmarked within this property. They were very attentive to those in all of the ideas that they did. And so I personally would support funding going to the city campus master planning. So again, thank you for all your work on this. I actually love all the ins and outs of the numbers. So thank you, Mr. Almeida, for walking me through that that fabulous tour. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Next, we have Andy Gilman, followed by Kathy Nolan and Wayne Maynard.
Thank you, council. Just a few items. One, if you recall, the electrification project that was proposed, and we were all here in the room, that order was like 360, something like that, that it's going to be over a million dollars, or we think it's a million. I think the conversation would have been much different had that number been brought up at the time. And yes, Mr. Harvey, you did say that number might not work, but I don't think anybody in the room thought over a million. So it probably needs to be brought up again. But secondly, I would offer, if we could separate these tiers by what I would call timeliness, meaning here are things that need to be done right now, or we would lose money now if we don't do it now, and things that we can decide later, just that there are so many items here that are being discussed that haven't been brought up in the past. And then with that timeliness, what I would propose, and this has nothing to do with the Green Coalition or the Land Conservancy, it would be if we are going to open this up to contribute to nonprofits, which I care about very much and am in favor of, I would suggest you open it up to the community now and say it's almost a solicitation for proposals. So you have this money that you're wanting to allocate. If there isn't something that is extremely timely, then I would suggest postponing, open it up, and then invite the community to come in. Increases transparency, makes everything clear, and you might get some ideas that you don't have now. Lastly, I would just, this is something I've been thinking about for a long time, and I don't know some of the details on this. But if we could take some of the money here and increase the paving timeline, I don't even know if our contractor has the capability of that. But if we know, as you already decided, here's the 2425 plan and it's ambitious. But we also know there are streets in terrible shape that aren't designated until 2026. We all have our own examples of that. If we could take some of that money that we know we're going to spend anyway, move it into the paving timeline and increase the timeline, does that save money from what we're going to spend two years from now or a year from now? Move it now and accelerate it. I would just propose that to say, if we're going to do it, let's do it now and save the money. So I guess I'm suggesting, generally speaking, postponing for things that you don't have to decide immediately. My two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
Next, we have Kathy Nolan, followed by Wayne Maynard and Tom Maloney.
Thank you. Council staff, Kathy Nolan, I'm here representing the Ojai Valley Green Coalition. And as some of you know, in 2022, the City of Ojai awarded the Green Coalition funding for the first phase of master planning for the city hall campus. And that first phase was for community engagement, which was well received by the community. We had site tours, we had workshops, we had a survey and produced a report based on, you know, what the community thought should happen on the property. Since then, we've, you know, been, we've met with city council members, we've met with staff. And the funding that you see presented here would be for the next stages to to complete the master plan. So it would also include additional community workshop. It would also include doing like site analysis, basic mapping, incorporating the information that we received for that community engagement in 2022, 2023. And then doing a schematic plan, concept plan, which we would present to city council and get feedback on as well. And of course, they would be invited to all of the to the workshop. And then ultimately coming back with the master plan for the city hall campus. So we think it would bring value to the city and to the community at large, and we encourage you to vote yes. I'm happy to answer any questions as well if if needed, but thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Next, we have Wayne Maynard, followed by Tom Maloney and Tanya Parker.
Good evening. Wayne Maynard, resident of Ojai, and I'm here on behalf of the Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council. I'm on the Board of Directors. And I would like to ask that that you consider reserving a portion of the surplus funds from the Measure C for fire mitigation. That is one of the priorities of the council and is also an item that was part of the ballot Measure C would fund fire mitigation. So I just would like to, as the previous speaker talked about, you know, let's let's put some some feelers out in the community for nonprofits that might be able to utilize that money. And specifically Measure C deals with fire mitigation, which is what we do. Just want to point out that the last community service grant that we got from the council was 50,000. And we leveraged that into a 1 million dollar study and report, which is your next agenda item. So, you know, a little bit of money we can use to go get more money, and it really helps. Thank you much.
Thank you, Wayne.
Next, we have Tom Maloney, followed by Tanya Parker, and then we'll move on to Zoom.
Hello, council. I'm Tom Maloney. I'm the Executive Director of the Ojai Valley Land Conservancy. Before I make comments about the parking area, I want to commend the council because I've known Lisa Wise for 20 years and was surprised to hear her name tonight. She's outstanding economist and city municipal and regional planner. You're not going to be disappointed. So good for you to hire Lisa. So the the one item there, the parking area, you know, with all due respect to Andy's wanting to delay, the parking along Maricopa Highway is kind of untenable. I parked there on the Fourth of July to ride my bike in to watch the parade. I almost got killed getting out of the park, getting out of my parking space along Maricopa Highway. The Ojai Valley Land Conservancy Board considered the possibility of putting the parking area on that little triangle of land up north of the St. Thomas Quinas parking area. After a long thoughtful discussion as a board at a land conservancy, said, yeah, parking area makes sense here. It softens the whole edge of the meadows by having less traffic and more bike and pedestrian traffic. With the bridge that was just installed, it it also enhances the active transportation that this council's, you know, adhered to. And so I don't agree with Andy that you should wait. I think you should make this decision because it's it's leveraging the work you're already doing and we're ready to go. So I encourage your strong support of the measure, the part of the proposal to spend 100K on a parking area there. There were some conditions for pervious surface, some plantings. Obviously, we have a nursery, which you're about to hear about, some, you know, some real thoughtful design that will go into it. So thanks a lot.
Thank you, Tom.
Next, we have Tanya Parker, and then we'll move on to Zoom with Mr. Bill Miley.
Good evening. I'm Tanya Parker. I'm the Deputy Director at the Ojai Valley Land Conservancy. I'm here to speak on behalf of the nursery project. The Conservancy has had a nursery for about 20 years that supports all of our restoration work that we've done on our preserves. We manage about 2,500 acres here in the Valley of open space, and we do a lot of restoration work. But with the Rewild Ojai program, we found that we know the importance of open space, but it also has to have habitat. It has to have native plants and it needs to be restored. And there's a lot of research going into how important our gardens can be to add to that habitat. So we've been building and working on the Rewild Ojai program for about three years now. It launched last fall. The components are a garden certification program, so you can get your front yard or backyard or larger parcels of land certified. And you can do larger projects, contract grow plants with us, and we can help consult on larger restoration projects. So in building this program over the last several years, we've found several things. One, that it's incredibly powerful to empower the community to be able to make a real difference and change in climate change by just simply planting plants. It's something that in general is such an existential crisis that we can make a little difference and feel good about. Second, planting native plants matters. And so as we've built this program, the biggest hurdle and the biggest pipeline that we've found or the squeeze in the pipeline is access to native plants. And so our native plant nursery will go now beyond supporting just our restoration projects, but providing for the public at more frequent plant sales, a wider variety, and more availability of plants. We also collect locally from our preserves. We protect our local genotypes and really truly support habitat in the community. So there's a lot of climate action happening. We know how important land and habitat is. And so this is a really active role that you can play in supporting a real difference that is helping on the ground now. We do have 100 and our budget's about 500,000 for the nursery. We have 167,000 from CalFire, a grant to support that. We have several private grants, and this grant will help close the gap to help us break ground this winter so that we can start providing plants refinely through county planning and also to help support the program as a whole, to expand it. And so I'm also here to answer any questions about it tonight as well.
Thank you, Tanya.
We'll move on to Zoom. First, we have Bill Miley, followed by Teal.
Hi there. This relates to the third tier. I saw that the Green Coalition was on the list to begin with, and then it was removed. But it indicated that it still was going to get 72,000, but I'm confused. I hope that gets resolved. I believe one of these, which is the plant nursery, is problematic because I don't think, I think it should be following the nonprofit funding proposals that the city has a protocol for. Item 10, which is the 100,000 for the parking lot, I think is a good idea. But certainly, it should include issues like how is it going to be managed, maintained, liability, how its use will be, and continues use. Parking obviously is important. The 75,000 for the Green Coalition, I believe, kind of builds on what they've done in the past. Excuse me. And all the ideas they have for those eight acres. That's a great place, and I'm really supportive of what they're planning, and I hope to get their money.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. Next, we'll have Teal, followed by Renee. Teal, you have the floor.
Thank you. My my thoughts, I'm I'm glad that the council members and the mayor brought up the Budget Committee. And I'm I'm seeing that there's a lot of moving parts to this. And it's, even though there's tiers and everything, and all due respect to staff and the city manager, I completely appreciate all the work. And just listening to this tonight, my heart is going out to the Art Center, to the Humane Society, to the Music Festival, to the tennis tournament, and to the hospital. I'm wondering about how these things were decided upon and just sort of thrown into the moving parts. And it, the community involvement with this town is everything. So I would highly recommend taking that into consideration. And the Budget Committee, I would feel so much better if this was coming from the Budget Committee with somebody that was, you know, like a voted, a voted person on the committee as well as from the community. And I guess I just kind of want some checks and balances. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Teal.
Next, we have Renee. Renee, you have the floor.
Good evening, members of the council and staff. I sent a letter in as public comment. And I also started putting together some background information and sent it to Carl Alameda today. Because I I feel like there's some history that is missing in terms of our community. One of the things in the call today I mentioned is that we went through a period of time where we had about five years of drought. And that was very serious drought. And I remember Betsy Stick saying iridification, and we can't do any building, and we can't do any housing because we had a serious drought. So I do feel like, and and we've been through water restrictions in the past, but now we're flush. Now we've got a lot of water. But I still think water management and in fact, fire scaping and wa- managing our landscapes and home hardening are all things that have to do with safety and the longevity of our community. And I think those have been overlooked in these proposed projects. For example, the ability to capture and store rainwater on people's property and get rid of turf that takes a lot of water. I think homeowners need help. They need handholding. They need somebody to show them how to do it and what to replace it with. I appreciate the Land Conservancy's recent effort to put in drought tolerant landscapes and do homeowner demonstrations of where they are doing those things. But they haven't yet incorporated the grasping of the rainwater harvesting and capturing rainwater and storing it in your landscape and groundwater recharge and using gray water. Those are all beneficial ecosystem things that we can do when we get rain or when we don't get rain. We need to be able to do both those things, and I think that should be incorporated in their program. And so we didn't have a chance to talk about all of these things in more detail. So I think you should delay. I think you shouldn't make decisions. I I understand the need for the paving project, and they're getting ready to do the project for Maricopa Highway. Go ahead and take those priority projects, but 250,000 is a lot of money that I think needs to be expanded on and how we could use that money, including building rainwater harvesting demonstration projects.
Thank you, Renee. That concludes our public comments for this item. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, we do have Lindy Palmer on Zoom, if needed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Palmer? Yes, good evening, Mayor and council members. Apologize for the technical difficulties earlier on. So I can speak to Councilmember Rule's comment about the 404,000 to begin with. I've got a whole list here. So the 404,000 is a is a starting point. We, it it's primarily for an assessment, and whatever's left over for implementation of that 404,000 is what we would use. So until we do an assessment of the electrification and climate mitigation projects that are required in all city facilities, we won't really know what the costs are to implement those. So that will come later, and that's what Mr. Gilman was talking about, the million dollar figure. That's, we're just kind of throwing Jell-O at the wall with that figure, but it wouldn't surprise me at all if we're in that ballpark. So I think that probably answers the question on that. Does anybody have any questions on that issue?
I actually do. From what I just, did I just hear that we're going to do an analysis of what's required? And is that required by the state or?
No, not required by the state. What we would be doing is a is an initial assessment on what we would do as a city. No requirements by the state at all. But what we want to do, you all want to do, to electrify the city and to, you know, remove any fossil fuel. you all want to do, to electrify the city and to, you know, remove any fossil fuel uses and go straight to electrification. So we need to assess every single facility that we have, the city has, and there's about 17 of them. So that's going to take time to create a feasibility study and an assessment and an analysis of all of those required features. And then we would move into an implementation period, which may very well span more than this fiscal year and into the following.
Okay, I think I get it now. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you, Lindy. I mean, Ms. Palmer.
Can I follow up on that? My understanding is that this HVAC project is equipment that were, you know, that is either needs to be replaced now or in the very near future. So it's not that we're, it's not that we're switching out good equipment that currently runs on gas. It's that these, this equipment is due for replacement, and we're making a policy decision to go to more sustainable, ecologically friendly equipment.
So that is, that is an absolute correct statement. The other, the other component that comes into that in some of our facilities, it's not, some of them, it's simple. We just replace a gas HVAC with an electric HVAC, which has happened throughout, in a couple of facilities in the city already. The challenges and the more complex projects are the ones, for example, out at Sarozody Park, and we want to replace the gas HVAC with electric. But that would be on the roof of the gym, which would require a roof replacement, solar panels, and then the HVAC unit on top. So the projects become more complex on some of the facilities. It's not as simple as a, as a gas water heater for an electric water heater or something of that nature. So they become a little bit more complex. And those are the, that's the level of assessment we really want to do and come back with, with some costs to implement those.
Can I ask a follow-up question? So before we've done the assessment and analysis, just because of the age of the HVAC equipment, we're assuming that it needs to be replaced. Is that correct? I mean, because that's what I just heard, is that it's all old and degrading, and we're not actually switching out good gear for, you know, more environmentally friendly gear, but it's on its way out and imminently, not like a couple of years. Is that what I understand?
You know, I cannot confirm that on all of the facilities. I would suspect that we're approaching that period because of the, sort of the, the lack of ongoing maintenance on our facilities that we have not done, I guess, over a period of time. But I can't say that definitively in all cases. But, but an assessment would definitely, you know, reveal that information.
Okay, appreciated. Thank you.
Sure. You're welcome. And I would like to also speak to Mr. Gilman's question and comment regarding moving paving projects forward. That is certainly something we can, we all know that as projects get pushed out two and three and four and five years down the road, they get more expensive. They just become more costly based on inflation and CPI, et cetera. So if the council were to decide that is where resources get spent sooner rather than later, it's certainly something we could do, you know, based on staff capacity, et cetera. But it's something we could certainly try to do, if that is the council's wishes.
Thank you, Ms. Palmer.
Okay. One more, one more comment?
Actually, Lindy, could I jump in really quick?
Sure.
Just, just my observation here. And I think this, wanting to make things really as productive as possible and recognizing that it's already nine o'clock and you need to make it through this, you have another item after this. What I would suggest is if, in your discussion, if you could just give us some framework you'd like to see, I'm going to assume this needs to come back. Okay? I'm going to make that assumption. There are some items that are kind of more time sensitive for purchase, but I think that if we truly consider it to be an emergency and we need to make the purchase, we'll bring back that as a ratification. In other words, like, for instance, IT security, if we really feel that we need to do that, I'll, I'll do that and I'll bring it back and you can ratify that expense. If in your discussion, you could just give us some general framework for how you'd like to see this repackaged in a better way to understand it, digest it, and move it forward, I would suggest that. I think that's a better way to go than, you know, clearly, we have some confusing bits to this and some loose ends a little bit. And apologize for the soupiness of it, but it's a lot that we're trying to move forward.
Could I?
Sorry, Carl wants to say something, too.
If I could try to unsoupie it a little bit. Of the core items that really need to move forward, it's about 300,000. We approve those, you call the balance 3.1, and come back at a future date or even at mid-year budget, and have a discussion of the balance in the general fund category.
Which, which, which items need to come forward?
Yeah, so the three items I'm pointing at, it's the onsite security at Kent Hall Lot that's already been approved and will be entering into it. So it's the 247,500. The IT, the IT.
Just so I can follow along, Carl, I apologize because we got the, we got the original staff report, then we got the, you know, the addendum report. Are we, are we talking, are you following along the addendum report at page two of six?
I am.
Yes.
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 But, but again, if I-
And so which?
Has been-
Yeah, if you could refer to the numbers.
If I could just, for everyone, verbalize the amounts. So in the general fund, item 2A, it's the unhoused contract security through February 28th. That's already been approved, and we're entering that contract period. So that allocation should happen. 247,500. The next is item four, which is IT security assessment. That is for 50,000. And then the final is the onsite environmental for the Public Works yard at 12,000. So it's about 295 and change.
However, and sorry, not to split hairs, I'm going to argue that if council, council has given general direction in all these areas. So I'm going to kind of counter that. And I'm going to say, I feel comfortable, as your city manager, making those expenditures and bringing them back for ratification because you've already given direction to expend, either to move in that particular project or make that expenditure. So I'm going to argue that I can, I can, we can bring all that back. We have council direction to do it. It just would be, you have to be comfortable with ratifying an expenditure over my authority, which is what you'd be doing. So in other words, the security for Secure All, right? You guys approved that at your last meeting. I would be, we have the funding that we-
It was just backing it out. Future discussions, all I'm saying, we would do. It'd be 3.1, not 3.4.
And that way, we won't be swimming around.
Could I?
I'm fine with that.
Could I make a comment?
Sure.
I would like also to add, item number 11, the Ojai Valley Green Coalition, they've been working on this project for years. And we have promised them over, I mean, we promised them through James Vega, we promised them through, his name was, whatever, Mark Scott. We promised him through Mark Scott. We promised him, you know, and as the liaison, I just feel the need to advocate as, you know, the last two years, we've all attended. So I would like to add that, and I'm hoping that my fellow council members will support that. This is a project that we're all very familiar with, and it is time to move forward with implementing the community recommendations that have been made over the last two years, if nothing more than to validate the work that they've done and to validate the community engagement. So I'm hoping that we can add that one as well.
I'm just a reminder to council, we're on discussion.
Can I ask, can I ask a question?
Councilmember Lang?
Oh, yes, thank you. Actually, I was wondering if in, actually, Lindy, this is for you, for our Public Works Director, is, is it possible as a part of, could we, could we include the land, the Ojai Valley Land Conservancy surface parking lot as a part of our overall ATP project?
I can answer that question.
No, okay, we can't.
And just really quickly, the reason why on that, what, the way that would work, 10,000-foot description that hasn't really been put out there. The final design for the ATP project removed the demonstration parking that you see alongside the highway that is there now. The final design removes that. And that was a council decision following discussions with the then superintendent of the school. That's why that happened. And so the idea is to create, replace that parking somewhere and do it in a manner that's cost-effective. Cost-effective way to do it is to make a donation to the Ojai Valley Land Conservancy and allow them to do the work. They do not have to pay prevailing wage. It would be on their property. It would be open to the public. So you could have people parking there, including students, who then have to just walk along the sidewalk to get to the school. But that's, that's the concept for it. But you can't use the ATP funding for that.
Thank you.
Can I, can I add in something there, too, as well?
Please.
Oh, so, and Ben is, City Manager is absolutely correct in that, in that statement. The other thing, there's a possibility that we could talk to, so our contractor for the ATP project is Granite Construction. So as we move into the project, they are supposed to be mobilizing next Monday, so on the 16th. And there's a possibility that we can have a discussion with Granite and put them in touch with the Conservancy, and they could make, they could make this agreement between the two parties. The city steps away. The only thing we would be doing is contributing some funds for that project. We, we don't want to be a part of it. We don't want to be paying prevailing wage and having it a public project. So it could be done between Ojai Valley Land Conservancy and Granite Construction, aside and apart from the city. But they're already mobilized out there. So it may work out well. And I could be involved in those conversations if that's the direction we choose to go.
Thank you. That, that-
Go ahead.
I was just going to say that, you know, that, that our, that to me makes sense. Our, our ATP project is affecting that property, and I would like to do something to, to help offset some of the difficulties with that.
And I think also, if I recall correctly, that at some point, we thought that the ATP would pay for that. And then we had to claw that back and say, so sorry. So this is really, I think, remedying that situation. So I would certainly support that because that was the, that is what happened, as I recall.
And I thank you for that. Because of late hour, and we do have two more items, I'd like to go ahead and put a motion on the table. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, for the encouragement. And I'd like to thank Mr. Alameda, our Assistant City Manager. Thank you for all your research and expertise. I really appreciate all these great ideas. And thank you to the community members for showing up, the Ojai Valley Land Conservancy and the Green Coalition. And we're in a really lucky position because we do have this surplus. We have 100% reserve. So we're in a really good place. I think we should recognize that and celebrate that. I do feel a little uncomfortable with the proposal about how to manage this. It's a lot of money to manage. And I think that it's important to get elected officials involved through the Budget Committee. And these are people who are accountable to the voters for creating a proposal. And many other cities do it that way. And the city of Ohio has done that, has had a Budget Committee, Fiscal Policy Committee for many, many years. And it's been a really vital support to our town. So I would like to make a motion, as an alternative to the staff's budget proposal, that, that I, as the mayor, would schedule a meeting of the Budget Committee as soon as possible to start discussing what to do with these said funds and propose some options for council consideration at a future meeting.
I'd like to make a substitute, oh, motion, if I could.
Is there a second for that motion?
I, I would make a second. I would second with a friendly amendment. And that is to proceed with the, the, so yes, put a pause, call the Budget Committee meeting together, and, and allocate some of the expenses that Mr. Alameda mentioned that were already, that we've already approved. So that would be the, the 200, the 2A, item 2A.
Item four.
Item four and five, and the Green Coalition. And then move, have, have our Public Works Director work with the Land Conservancy to, to look at that, at, ways that we could, could partner with them.
I appreciate that. I'm not going to accept it because I really would like the Budget Committee to look at it carefully. And as the city manager just said, those three items, the onsite security, the IT security, and the onsite environmental study, city manager felt comfortable to move those three forward because those have a time consideration.
I'm going to make a substitute motion.
So no second for my motion. Councilmember Lang, sorry?
So I'd, I'd propose a friendly amendment, just so that there's no, you know, question that, that we include 2A, four, and B. Go ahead and authorize the city manager to move forward with those. And then I do like the idea of convening the Budget Committee and to take a big, long look at a very vast array of different proposals.
Okay, I will, thank you. I will accept that friendly amendment. So we have a motion and a second. Councilmember Rule, you have a substitute motion?
I do. Or if Councilmember Lang is still with her substitute motion. Basically, I agree that we accept, you know, these items, 2A, four, and five. And I, I really feel strongly that we have asked much of the Ojai Valley Green Coalition. They are a well-known quantity. They have done a lot of work over the last three years. And I just, it makes no sense to me to bring that to a finance committee that may know nothing about it. So, so I'm feeling very strongly, and I would be very disappointed if we weren't able to move this forward with them. I will also point out that the Finance Committee lost 8 million dollars that showed up. So, you know, the idea of the Finance Committee being, you know, being perfect, okay, but what about that 8 million dollars that nobody bothered to mention wasn't around? So, but that's, we were going to have that discussion on a separate item about the Finance Committee, and I think it's worth having. What happened to that Finance Committee? And how did people get on it and all those kinds of things? But once again, I'm asking my fellow council members to please support the Ojai Valley Green Coalition, the work that they have done for years and years, and move this forward, move this project forward. That is my substitute motion. I hope I get a second, and I hope we get a vote.
Is there a second for that motion?
What's the difference between your, your motion and Rachel's motion?
She was doing a friendly amendment that wasn't accepted. And so I'm doing a second, I'm doing a different motion.
I definitely.
Yeah, and Rachel, Rachel, but it wasn't, it was included, the parking lot, I agree. I mean, have Public Works discuss with the Ojai Valley Land Conservancy how to make that, you know, happen. It is, it is a timely situation where we have the parties ready to go to work. Why wouldn't we try to be effective and efficient in that way?
Is there, wait, just one second.
Yeah, I just have a comment, and I-
Wait, one second. Is there a second for Councilmember Rule's motion?
I'll second.
Okay. All right.
If it includes the parking lot. Okay. And, and all the things that, I mean, I like what our city manager said about, you know, that we give him authority. Yeah, okay.
So my, my concern about those two items is not that, that there, you know, probably isn't some merit to each of them, but they're, they're fundamentally functionally different than, than the, the first tier items that we're approving and going forward. And they both involve giving money to a nonprofit. And, and one of the things that I would expect the Budget or Fiscal Advisory Committee to do is to, is to, you know, we've been talking about and never getting to the point of having a fiscal policy about when- when the city, which by the way is a nonprofit, um, would be involved with giving money to a nonprofit. We need to have a structure. Um, I do understand that there's a special relationship with, uh, Ojai Valley Green Coalition, but I wouldn't wanna move forward, uh, you know, for them without creating the proper, uh, you know, system and framework for here's how and where we can, uh, give money to an organization to do these projects.
Can I respond to that, please? Because it's very clear to me, this has been in discussion numerous times, that the model that we decided on would be that the nonprofits would make a proposal, which I think was sent to everybody, would make a proposal and the council would decide whether or not that proposal, um, warranted funding because it was something that we would choose to do but did not have the capacity to do. The Green Coalition has done that on a number of occasions. Um, and it has come up for discussion. So that is the model that we decided on, that it would not be a, we, we changed the model from, you know, send us your applications for money and to, you know, tell us what you would like to do and we will evaluate if it's something that the city values. And that is what has occurred with the Green Coalition. So we adopted that model. They followed that model. They followed that model again. Um, and they conducted many, many, many community outreach sessions that Brian has, has attested to. I've gone, Rachel's gone, Suze is gone. Um, community input has been there. It is solid. So because it does follow the model we set up and because community support is solid, I would once again ask this, uh, council to move this forward. It, it isn't, it isn't a new model. This is what we, this is how we decided we would fund nonprofits, a proposal from them that we would evaluate.
Okay, another, another comment and concern is that with respect to the Ojai Valley Land Conservancy parking lot, um, not on city land. And as I understand it, it would involve us, you know, making an actual gift to Ojai Valley Land Conservancy. And there are legal hurdles to jump through that, I mean, I, at least the analysis should be there.
Right. The analysis has been done at a preliminary level. It is lawful for the city to provide a donation to a nonprofit in return for a public service. You're making that parking lot available to the public. It would not be limited just to their patrons.
And, and this, if, if this, the parking lot was also discussed years and years ago.
You have a comment?
This is not new, parking lot. Yeah.
Well, how we're handling it is.
Well, if, if I could just.
Councilmember Lang?
Thank you. If I could just offer two reasons why I'm more in favor, why I'm, I'm in favor of the parking lot and the green, the Ojai Valley Green Coalition, is because as we do get the Fiscal Policy Committee together, these, well, first of all, with the, with the Land Conservancy, with the parking lot, that was something that, that was part of the, the ATP. We, we actually did promise them that. And then when all the plans came out, we had to backtrack on that. And so to me, it feels like if there's a way that the Public Works Director can work with them, you know, it, I, I think that there, we, maybe there's even a way that it wouldn't be a hundred thousand. It just, it just feels to me like this, this is, um, it would be a, a benefit. This, this falls into a category that's not just we're giving a donation. This is like, we promised this. This was a part of an agreement that we made.
Excuse me, Mayor. Point of order. I'm gonna call the question.
Okay.
Through the mayor here, from the clerk's seat.
Oh. A second or consensus to vote would be in order. If it's debated, then it's a second and then a vote.
Oh, okay. Do I need to repeat the motion?
Well, no. So it's the call, you've moved to call the question. If everybody's ready to vote, we just restate the motion and vote. If people wanna fight over whether or not to call the question, then.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
It's a second to call the question and then a vote on that.
I got it.
And I'll kick back to the mayor.
Okay. Any, any comments before we call the vote, call the question? We have a motion, we have a second. Uh, Mr. City Clerk, would you please repeat the motion?
Could I jump in on that?
Of course.
So as I understood it, it would be to allocate the four items of the unhoused security contract, the IT security assessment, the site survey of the lower public works yard in the Ojai Valley Land Conservancy service parking lot. The total.
And the.
And it is the Green Coalition and the Green Coalition. So the total of those allocations would be four hundred sixty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. So that future discussion with the Budget Committee, the amount under discussion would be about 2.9 million. It would still need to be discussed how that's allocated because tonight the council's taking action to allocate four hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars.
And, and the, but the motion is to, that the Budget Committee is going to address, uh, the bulk of what's left over.
What about? Except, except the Green Coalition and the.
I'm sorry, but the, the question has been called. So we can either decide not to call the question or we can, or we can call the question.
Clarifying what the question is.
The, the motion.
Well, you haven't even heard the motion yet.
Can I restate the motion perhaps?
That'd be great. Thank you.
It was a substantive motion by Councilmember Rule with a second by Councilmember Francina to approve the allocation for item two A, unhoused contract for security service, two hundred forty-seven thousand five hundred. Item two B, unhoused contract security service, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Item four, IT security assessment, fifty thousand. Item five, site survey and phase one environmental, lower public works yard, twelve thousand. Item ten, Ojai Valley Land Conservancy surface parking lot, one hundred thousand. Item eleven, Ojai Valley Green Coalition, seventy-two thousand. I'll ask the maker of the motion, is that accurate?
It was more of an informal for the Ojai Valley Land Conservancy service parking lot, but I'm happy to keep it in the motion.
Up to a hundred thousand.
Yes, I'm happy to keep it in the motion.
And just to confirm, there's nothing about the Budget Committee in your motion?
There is nothing about the Budget Committee in my motion in that the city manager suggested that we bring that back. And I think because eight million dollars went missing at the last Budget Committee, it's worth having a conversation about how we will reconvene the Budget Committee. And I would like to have that conversation. It's an important one to have. So I am not putting that in my motion, but I am hoping that the city manager will bring that back at the earliest convenience.
Okay, my question is, can, as part of this, if Mayor Sticks wanted to make a, a motion today regarding the Budget Committee, when, separate from this, could she do so?
A motion to have the rest of the items, some, all or none of them considered by the Budget Committee would be in order, yes. And then there'd have to be a conversation about what the budget, the Budget Committee as it presently can, exists or.
It doesn't.
And then I think, I think the question is, can we vote on the question that's presented and then have a second vote?
Second.
On the other items, yes.
Yes.
Cause that, that motion takes care of items, the ones I listed.
Yes.
The rest of them are a second subsequent motion, subsequent motion.
Have the roll call then?
Yes, Mayor. The motion is understood for the record. Roll call. Councilmember Francina.
Yes.
Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Mayor Sticks.
No.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Whitman.
Yes.
Motion passes four to one.
Okay. And then, um, I'll go ahead and make another motion, uh, to go ahead and call a meeting of the Budget Committee, um, as soon as possible.
I'll second that.
Um, point of order to the city attorney. Is that on the agenda?
I assume it was a motion by the mayor to call a meeting of the Budget Committee to consider the rest of the items not approved on the list on the table and have the Budget Committee return to the council with a recommendation on those items. Is that accurate? If so, that would be on the agenda.
Only on those items.
On the items that were not just approved.
That's correct. Okay. Uh, ready for a roll call, please?
Um, I, I just wanna point out once again that there is massive confusion as to what is the Budget Committee? Is it an advisory body? Who's on it?
Let's call the question, please.
Okay, I'm gonna call the question. Go ahead and have the.
Well, I, I can make a comment. Uh, excuse me if you don't wanna hear it, but I, I am allowed to make a comment. Um, I'm going to be voting no on this because we do not have a sense of what this committee actually is. There's confusion. We've heard both from the city manager and so I'm gonna be voting no on this. And I think it's irresponsible to go ahead and have convene a committee that we don't even know their purpose. But that having been said, let's take roll call.
Wait, wait.
Councilmember Francina.
Yeah, when I made my comment about the Budget Committee, I, my intention was that, that you could make a motion that we, uh, that we simply, um, you know, at this point, we don't have a Budget Committee. I, I was thinking you would make a motion that we create a, a Budget Committee. We don't know who's on the Budget Committee. I know Councilmember Rule wants to be on that.
We have an existing committee that is not fully, it exists, but it is not fully staffed or fully, um, they're not fully constituted.
We have.
Four of six.
We have our elected treasurer, we have Jeff Rains, uh, business owner, we have the city manager and we have the mayor. So we do have a Budget Committee. So, um, let's go ahead and call the question. Could we have a roll call, please, Weston?
Yes, Mayor. We have a motion by Mayor Sticks with a second by Councilmember Lang to have a meeting of the Budget Committee scheduled as soon as possible to consider the recommendation of item five.
If I could clarify that, it's not all of item five. It's a meeting of the Budget Committee as it currently exists, which is, just to make it clear for the record, the four personnel, the mayor, the elected city treasurer, Mr. Rains and the city manager, those four as the present existing Budget Committee minus the other two seats to meet, to consider the items that were not just approved in the prior motion within item five.
And, and I'll add a friendly amendment that we, uh, move forward as, uh, city manager Harvey suggested that at our next meeting, we discuss the Budget Committee, um, and how it's composed and what it's.
Okay, and that, I will accept that. Uh, okay, roll call, please.
Can we separate those two?
You can make a motion to divide the question, yes.
I, I would second that.
Yeah, let's divide the question.
Okay. All right. Let's have a roll call on the first, my motion.
Roll call ready. Councilmember Rule.
Can I ask a, a question? So, but if we vote to have the Budget Committee meeting, or, or if we vote to discuss the Budget Committee, that's not a part of this, that wouldn't be a part of this agenda item. That would be a separate topic.
Correct.
So we actually can't vote on that. We can only vote on the Budget Committee meeting on these items.
Good catch.
That's a fair point. And it's already on, the Budget Committee coming, the Budget Committee being, the council considering the Budget Committee's composition and existence is already on your planned future agenda items for the next meeting.
Perfect.
So.
So I withdraw my amendment.
Great. All right. Uh, roll call, please, Weston.
Councilmember Rule.
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Francina.
I don't like to vote no, but I'm going to vote no for the reasons.
Mayor Sticks.
Yeah. Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Motion passes three to two.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. We will move on to, um, item number six, Ojai Valley Community Wildfire Protection Plan. And we have a presentation, I believe, from Chris Danch.
Yes, we do, Mayor. Uh, so we're gonna load that up. Mr. Danch is here at the podium.
Given this hour, I'm thinking, I'm gonna do this really fast, okay? And I, I want to do this, many for people in the audience, as what is a CWPP? You people have had an opportunity now to look at the document. So, uh, so very quickly, next slide. So the good news is, of course, is that the first ever Ojai Valley CWPP Community Wildfire Protection Plan is now completed. Um, that's not to say that it is a living document. It will continue to be reviewed and amended from here on out. Uh, but, uh, under this federal framework, document is now for, uh, certainly for the Ojai Valley Fire Safety Council, the principal planning and guidance document, uh, that will help us in our wildfire risk mitigation, preparedness, response, recovery, uh, things that we do. Um, and I wanted to highlight that, uh, it's also very important and that it operates as a funding mechanism. In the wildfire funding arena, more and more funder, state and federal, are now requiring you to, if you want a project, if it's not identified in a properly prepared through the framework under the Healthy Forest Restoration Act, they will not consider you for funding. So it is becoming an essential item to have. Uh, and ours is, if I must say so myself, is very comprehensive and has an extensive action plan, which will also be reiterated in a regional priority prioritization plan that's being funded through the Ventura County Wildfire Collaborative for the entire county through the State Coastal Conservancy. So this stuff is all starting to tie together. Uh, and the collaborative's got another 2.9 million grants. So the, these, these mechanisms we're putting together are actually working. Next slide. Uh, the core working group that prepared this plan was obviously us, Ventura County Fire Department, and then we had two consultants, uh, that assisted with this. Uh, principally Jensen Hughes was the, the primary consultant. Next. And then we had a whole series of meetings of a technical advisory group, uh, that was on all the projects that were involved in it. It's not just the formal CWPP, but also the fine scale mapping, the evacuation assessment, vulnerability assessments. And there's the list of people that, of agencies that participated. Uh, and a number of those meetings were, were relatively robust, uh, in giving us information and guidance on the work we were doing. Next. A component of the CWPP is what we call the digital dashboard. Uh, we're trying to find a little spicier name for it, but that's what we got right now. And that is the database that contains the fine scale risk mapping results and other data that we've put in there. Uh, there's about a hundred data layers in there right now. And we have some live streaming data. The dashboard, uh, was developed through these, uh, technical advisory groups and the collaborative. It will, it is slated to become the central wildfire database for the entire county. It'll eventually be hosted by Ventura County Fire Department. Uh, so more and more data will be coming into this. This is just a growing, developing progress that we're doing. Uh, there's, uh, next slide, please. Then, for example, we have a lot of work being done on parcel risk scores, uh, where there's actually an interactive part of that. That is still being worked on, uh, because a lot of the data we got from the county overlapping APN with a little other parcel data wasn't really lining up we're supposed to. So we're continuing to work on that and have some additional funding coming to work on that. And then we have this management plan that this database is going to be actively managed here on out, uh, principally through the core working group that was on the CWPP, but others. Uh, and already we have a project slating, uh, starting now that will add a vulnerability assessment of critical infrastructure for the entire county will go into this as well. And that's also funded by the Coastal Conservancy. Next. And so there's, it is consists of these components, which are all downloadable on our site. We have this, the, the main volume of the CWPP. Separately, you can download the appendices, which also contains the raw data from the surveys that we did. On the volume three, the actual report you download is the Embercast Report, which is countywide. Uh, and then there's a digital dashboard. Uh, and then the volume four contains the evacuation assessment that we performed. Next. All done, all on our site. Uh, obviously we're a little behind on the August thirty-one date there. Uh, on the tutorials, they'll be here anytime now. One is how to navigate the dashboard. It's quite extensive. And the second is for advanced users who wanna gain more out of the, out of the dashboard and willing to spend the time to do that. Next. Uh, and you can access it through our site. Um, and is there any questions that need to be answered at this moment?
Thank you, Chris. Any questions from council?
Can you ref, oh, may I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Absolutely.
Can you refresh me when we stopped meeting? Cause I'm, I, I think I missed some of the last meetings. I, the reason I ask is because I saw under the acknowledgements, James Vega, and I'm just wondering if another city manager should have also been included?
Well, we had completed the process of the technical advisory groups, uh, before, um, Ben was here and we, I believe, Mark was here as well. So those, those, those concluded , uh, back in 2023. Uh, and I don't know the, I have to go back and look at the calendar because we also had, you know, we had community workshops, uh, that were conducted, some, and one virtual one. And then we had the tag groups. And we also had an open house, uh, that was at Station 21, uh, that we took data in, uh, from. that we took data in from people coming in. We had Ojai Day, which we dedicated to bringing in information on evacuation from the public. It's part of the assessment. But I believe that we had concluded the technical advisory meetings at the time Mr. Vega was still here.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
I'd have to confirm on my calendar, though, to tell you the truth. So many meetings. Any other questions about this? I hope, I know there's a lot of information in there, but again, we want to stress that this is a living document. So this is something moving forward that's going to be routinely looked at. And already, I'm, I'm finding mistakes after reading it 100 times. I'm still finding mistakes that, so it might be a little errata being put up on the site there on correcting some stuff. We're also taking in comments. We've had a steady request of people coming who want to download a document, look at it. So if they find mistakes, or find a comment you want to make, or something in addition to it, or to emphasize something, or suggest a project idea, please let us know. That will be paid attention to and incorporated in our continuing management plan.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, unfortunately, I have a bunch of questions.
Okay.
So the city of Ojai is maybe 10% of this plan. Has the county, which I think is the rest of the 90%, have they adopted?
It's, it's there in their possession for signature, and they indicate they're going to sign it. So the county, the signatures to the document will be the county of Ventura, supervisor District One. It'll be Ventura County Fire Department, actually three people within the fire department. That's our pre-fire specialist, our, the, the director of the Hazard Fire Reduction Program, and Chief Gardner. And there'll be Cal Fire also signs off on it. That'll be, I believe, Joe Lewis up in the San Luis Obispo unit, which is the closest unit, and finally, the U.S. Forest Service. And it's all out to them for signatures, all vindicated that that's in the process.
So if we adopt this document, and I'm a little bit concerned about the idea of receiving a document on Friday and being asked to adopt it, you know, 265 pages or whatever it is, being asked to adopt it, you know, two days later, I'm concerned about the public maybe having questions. But are we required to implement any recommendation?
No.
Within here, based upon having adopted the plan?
No, the citizens are no obligation to do anything regarding that plan. That's something that it's going to, under its own discretion to do that. This is not a legally binding document. This is a planning document that helps us as a community and the various agencies involved, and the municipalities involved, and the county, on how to identify and prioritize projects. That's all it is. It doesn't require the city to do anything. I would question, though, that the characterization of this is 10 versus 90%. This valley has a landscape level issue about wildfire that extends beyond the city limits, but affects the city very much. So when we look at this, you know, we can't look at wildfire as, well, that's the city's problem, that's the county's problem, or that's some parcel owner's problem. Wildfire and the existential threat that it poses to this community doesn't care about any of that. Doesn't care about jurisdictional boundaries, or property lines, or whatever. So we have to look at this as a whole. And what we've done is taken basically the entire watershed and looking at Upper Ojai and down into one, down into Santa Paul for evacuation concerns, and some areas outside the watershed for what we consider to be really important fuel reduction projects, and taking a look at that whole. So those kinds of divisions in our mind don't really allow us to address these things. So, but it doesn't require the city to do anything. What it will do is allow us, anybody else who wants to use this plan, to go after funding, to go after that, the recommendations, or anything else that we need to mitigate our wildfire risk. That's what it will do.
But if, if we adopt the plan, we endorse the idea that people who live in the city live in a high fire risk area, and yet the plan itself says that with certain exceptions in neighborhoods, we're not a fire, high fire risk area. And isn't it likely that that designation is going to make it just harder for us to be insured?
Well, I will say that the insurance issue is, of course, extremely complex and nuanced. Our document is not going to have any effect on that. And in fact, we are scheduling in December, we're looking at putting on an extensive roundtable, drawing from people from all over about talking about this very issue of insurance. But the plan, insurance companies have their way of determining their risk, and they're setting their premiums. And while what they charge for their policies is subject to regulations through the insurance, the commissioner, whether they decide they're right or not, is their business. So this document's not going to affect, they're, they're, they first have the hazard maps, but they don't look at it that way. They have their, I would say the insurance companies are lagging behind the ability to actually, this is a very complex topic, by the way, but they lack the ability to do, to adequately assess the risk at this point. Because for many years, for decades, this wasn't even a blip on the radar for, for insurance. And then 2017 on, it's gone through the roof. So the past claims, history way of doing this is no longer working. And people are trying to predict a future now, it's become uncertain. So I'm not here to defend the companies, or whatever it is, but this document is not going to have any effect on that, except to the point that if we actually start to mitigate, do and document extensive community and parcel level mitigations, then that's what we can do to help get the intention of the insurance companies that this is what we're doing. And this is part of a much larger ecosystem of what's happening here between Ojai, the rest of the state, but then the region. So this is talks between Ventura and Santa Barbara, between like Fire Safe Councils and the fire departments and insurance companies, UCSB, the Wildfire Institute of Cal Poly. It's a huge array of people looking at this issue. What this document will do, if anything, will allow us to take those mitigation risks that will improve the ability to have an insurance in the first place and an affordable insurance.
So there's three cities, county cities, that have adopted their individual plans, which incorporate their borders, or are applicable within their borders. So why did those cities choose to make their own plans?
Yeah. Well, first off, there is a countywide CWPP that was recently updated. Actually, this Fire Safe Council did the first countywide back in 2010, haven't been updated since. So any, any, any municipality, any county can choose, actually, any group can choose to do a CWPP. For example, communities like Topanga Canyon can do their own. So they reign, you know, so we made a decision in here to include a, a planning area that encompasses as much as we can within that area, the complex issue of wildfire. Anybody else can make that decision. But our, see, but it only affects that area. It doesn't affect, Santa Paula doesn't affect any other city, or any other, any of the, any other community. For example, Oak Park and Bell Canyon have their own CWPPs. But ours addresses our area, and it's collaboratively developed through the people of our area, the agencies, the community. Okay. Anything else? Those are my questions. Okay.
Any, any other questions? Okay, let's go ahead and move on to public comment?
Yes, Mayor. In-house.
Should I sit down?
Yes.
Thank you.
First, we have Wayne Maynard in-house, and we'll move on to Bill Miley on Zoom.
Thank you, Wayne Maynard, resident of the city, and on the Board of Directors of Fire Safe Council. I just want to just really appreciate all the work our staff has done in the preparation and working with the document, the involvement of the city during the process, and all of the other agencies. It was a very big project. I think it was over a million dollars. And it's 1.2. Okay, so it was a big project. It identifies, it was a scientific project. We brought in experts that did a lot of scientific research and evaluated our area to build this plan. And so I think it's going to be a benefit for our city. You guys agreed to it when we went into it, that you were going to be a part of it. So hopefully you will sign off on it, and it can be used as a planning document for projects that you might want to do within the city, or projects that the Fire Safe Council might want to do, or maybe any other organization, our community can use this document as a guide for things that can be done to improve fire safety in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne.
Next, we have Bill Miley on Zoom. Mr. Miley, you have the floor.
Try again. Okay. This is really important and complicated, and 255 pages. Even I haven't read this yet. I believe the public needs to know key details about this 255-page document. Probably should be presented to a public forum before you adopt it. The actions proposed within this, I assume, will invite, involve active involvement and commitment by our 7,500 residents in order to fulfill its purpose. So I think maybe a citizens' ad hoc committee ought to be put together. There ought to be some, or several forums. We should look at, present the key issues for the residents in this city that this will provide. Oh, hang up. Oh, don't cut me off. I don't want this, to see this 55-page tome on a shelf in the future, not being understood by people like on Drown Street, Signal Street, or many of the streets of Ojai. So I would suggest it best be summarized in a one-page newspaper presentation, Ojai Valley News, maybe several times, and also a brochure for the public, looking at the key, listing the key issues for the citizens of this town that this document will provide. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill.
That concludes public comment for item six.
Excellent. Let's move on to discussion.
Excuse me, Chris, he, he would like to respond to Bill Miley. Is that something that we are open to?
I would like to hear.
Yes, yes.
Chris?
Well, first, I want to say that this, you know, we conducted a number of community workshops, and there was ample opportunity for people to come to those workshops. And I have to say, they were not well attended. We were very disappointed, quite frankly, in the attendance. And the, as far as the city was concerned, the sole participant in one of our workshops was Mayor, Mayor Sticks. And, but we also were, you know, we had quite a bit of agency and government involvement. So we had representatives from Lamone and Bennett, Carver Hall, Brownlee. We had the county there, we had the Forest Service there, we had the various agencies from the county were there. But we also, essentially, we, we did two extensive surveys. The results of those surveys are, one is the transit survey, that result, the raw data, is in the evacuation assessment, volume four. And the raw data from the public survey is in the appendix to the CWPP. So the other thing you're faced with, in all respects to Mr. Miley, to take something as complex as this issue we have, and put that in a one-page summary, and somehow that's going to satisfy people about what we're doing here, I wish it was that simple. It is not that simple. And so, you know, when we design projects, and we propose them, and we try to get money for them, you know, we just don't walk around and do that. Like, you know, let's just do this over here and see, you know. Everybody who's, who's physically affected by that is, is dealt with, is talked to. And these are how these things develop over time. This is why it took 1.2 million dollars to get to this point, is to take all this vast amount of information and put it into something that we can use as something that guide us through this complex, nuanced issue that we have, that has so many different facets to it. So, you know, we have, you just go on and on. But that's why the document is the length it is, is because it is comprehensive. And it's there to guide us in designing projects and mitigation measures that make sense.
Thank you, Chris.
Susan?
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable to adopt the recommendation, because I did participate in most of the early meetings, and I saw the, you know, there was representatives from, from many agencies. Those were, those meetings were held at, at help of Ojai, actually. And then also the fact that we, this is a living document, and we can, you know, we're going to be learning more and making, anticipate, making changes. I was wondering how you, how you plan to make this available. I mean, there'll be, maybe there already has been, and maybe I missed it, the press, yeah, it's in the newspaper.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, so there's a link in the newspaper, and maybe there could be a few, like, some hard copies. We usually do this, you know, at, at City Hall, the library, you know, isn't that what you, we usually do with a document this large? We print a few so that the public can sit here for a few hours and browse through it.
We've done, I've already spent a couple thousand on copies, just so you know, on this thing. So, yeah.
Yeah. No, I, I think you've come this far, and it sounds like we're not obligated to do anything. Yeah, so.
Councilmember Francina, would you like to put a motion on the table?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 24, whatever the other number is, to adopt the 2024 Ojai Valley Community Wildfire Protection Plan under the provisions of the Healthy Forest Restoration Act, and to implement the plan and its recommendations as consistent with and subject to the city's general plan and the Ojai Municipal Code, and as provided in the adopted city budgets for each fiscal year. And again, to emphasize that this is not a legally binding document.
Correct.
Is there a second for that motion?
I'll, I'll second it.
Any final comments?
Yeah, I, I have quite a few comments. I think that the idea that this is not legally binding is completely inconsistent with the resolution, which says we're directing staff to implement the protection plan and its recommendations. So what that means is that we are going to start cutting down native trees in certain zones without, I mean.
If I could jump in, the, the key there is as consistent with and subject to the general plan, the municipal code, and as provided in the adopted city budgets for each fiscal year. No current city budget, for example, provides for cutting down trees. That second part of the resolution is designed to convert it to not be legally binding, unless and until the council chooses to direct implementation of any specific recommendation or requirement, and then has to provide budget for it.
I, I also have great concern about identifying every resident of Ojai as being in a severe fire zone, when one, they haven't been given notification that we're going to make a determination that they live in a severe fire zone. It may cause their insurance to be canceled. I know that Mr. Danch has said that it's not going to, but.
I didn't say that. I'm not saying the document's not going to cause that to happen. Well, whether the insurance is going to give you, whether a company's going to insure your property, or not insure your property, or what it's going to charge for that, is not determined by a document such as this. It doesn't work that way. I wish I had that kind of influence over insurance companies, because I could go a long way towards solving this crisis. But I don't have any effect to do that, nor does the Fire Safe Council, nor does the CWPP. What is this, when we, if you read the document carefully, we look at the hazard and risk maps that are in there, and how they define those areas. Now, already, for example, the Cal Fire maps that are off, that are. Now, already, for example, the Cal Fire Maps that are often, that are forming the basis of a lot of that risk mapping in there, we just have find more, more granularity to it, they're being revised, and also they're now including a designation for what's called LRA land, and that's Local Responsibility Area. And you're going to see an increase in the, in the state maps, placing, placing parcels within that fire hazard area that hasn't previously been done. Now, those maps won't be out until the end of the year or something like that. I can't remember exactly when it's going to happen. But the, the mapping done by the state, which does have an effect on this, that is moving toward declaring more and more areas either high or very high. Well, our, those maps, you look at what they say, but they're just reflecting the data that is given to us by, 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 by public agencies. So, but we don't start taking measures about, you know, at, at, at community level and beyond, then this insurance crisis is not going to get any better. And we, and, and we're trying to improve the, the ability of communities to actually communicate its mitigation actions and have them have an effect. But we don't have, we don't have that power to do that. So we believe that planned action based on science, based on the facts, based on the input from the community-related agencies, that, and follow those measures is going to help, one, mitigate the risk, which is the real thing we're concerned about, our house is going to be here, and number two, over time, will improve the situation on the insurance, but that's not going to be solved anytime soon. I mean, that, that's just wishful thinking. I'm sorry.
I think we're back to council discussion.
Yeah. Just once, Mayor Protem, are you finished with your comment?
No, I think that Mr. Miley has the right idea that we got a 265 document that, you know, 265-page document that, that we're contemplating adopting, and I think we need to give the public more than three days' notification to understand and make their positions known, even if there have been other hearings. We're not talking about, you know, we're not talking about adopting this much data as being our. So the document exists, you know, we can use it any way we want, but adopting it takes it a step further, and I think the public deserves to be a participant in whether we adopt this. I think the public deserves to be able to express their concerns about how it might impact them in terms of their trees, you know, being cut down or their, or their insurance rates going up. And we can't assure anybody that that's not going to happen. So I'll make a substitute motion that we set this for a public workshop and allow the public to comment on this document, what their concerns are, what their support is, if that's where it is, and that we then, you know, revisit this after the public's had that workshop.
Is there a second?
Just in response to that, because we have work to do. Okay, I'm sorry.
We need to move forward with this. We're going to, we're going to be in an endless loop here. It's going to go back and forth.
Second, for Mayor Protem's motion. Okay, we'll go back to our, the first motion that was made by council.
Could I make a comment, please?
Yes.
I have not yet made a comment. So I, I'm, I think that some council members are misunderstanding what this document is, first of all. It is just simply a scientific analysis and a planning document. We are under no legal requirement to adopt any part of it. None of our citizens are under any legal obligation to adopt any of it. It is just a detailed analysis of the risk. And we can say, oh, but the insurance companies might use it. I just, yeah, but no. I mean, this is something that they worked on deeply. It is, it is a very, very powerful and important document, and they have done numerous, numerous outreach sessions with, with the community, and the community has shown up or hasn't shown up, they're not going to show up, they're not, no one's going to read it. It, this, to me, is, is a ridiculous suggestion that we need to have another community meeting on this particular topic. It's been going on for probably two years at least, and I feel strongly that adequate outreach has been done. And the second thing is, is that this is based on scientific experts, not Leslie who comes in and says, oh, I'm really scared that I'm going to be, have to cut down my trees. I mean, there, there are situations where the community input is truly valuable, but this is a scientific analysis of risk. It's, it's like apples and oranges is what we're talking about here. And the bottom line is, and this is, this has been said, we have no obligation to do any of it, no obligation to do any of it, as our city attorney has said. And yes, we can debate that, and we can say, oh, yeah, but, you know, you never know. Let's move forward with this, let's call the question, let's vote on this. This is, this is a great document. I mean, truth be told, I scanned it, but, you know, I love the dashboard. I love being able to see where the ecologically dangerous zones are and, and those kinds of things. It's an amazing amount of work. It's an amazing resource to use. And it would just, for the Ojai City Council to say, no, we don't value it, you know, I just, I, I don't, I don't see the point of it. So if we could call the question, and, and, you know, it's, it'll be invaluable to, as an integrate, to integrate it into our climate mitigation, you know, well, our climate action plan and our climate, in the climate mitigation part of that. This is, this is a great document to, to pass on and say, you know, take this into consideration. So if we could call the question, that would be really great.
Just one sense comment, if I may. There's nothing that prevents us from have, if the public starts to dig in and read this and they want a workshop to discuss it, we can have a workshop.
True.
You know, so.
I would just like to thank Chris Danch and the Fire Safe Council for all the hard work on this, and I do agree that we can always change it, it's non-binding. And the fact that it will allow, to open the door for more funding is a huge issue, so, and a boon, so. Councilmember Lang, you want to add a comment?
Yeah, I was just going to make a comment because I, I, I do, I think that there will be others who share Mayor Protem Whitman's concerns, and, and, and I'm, I'm thinking that you having some kind of, of FAQ on the website or having something that can consolidate the findings of this, and maybe we can work together with the Fire Safe Council, staff could work with the Fire Safe Council to do something like that. But I, I think this, this is such a thorough document, it has so much research, and it, and it would be, I think it would be a benefit of the, for the community to, to be able to really see what all went into this.
Okay, let's go ahead and have the roll call.
Yes, Mayor. We have a motion by Councilmember Francina with a second by Councilmember Lang to adopt item six as recommended. Councilmember Rule.
Uh, yes.
Mayor Protem Whitman.
No.
Councilmember Francina.
Yes.
Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Mayor Sticks.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick question of Mr. Danch? Is there an executive summary?
I was just going to ask and then say that. Yes, there will be an executive summary. I'm in the process of drafting.
Please adjust the microphone.
Yeah. Thank you, that's great.
I am in the process of drafting an executive summary for this document that I just, you know, how do you take 300 pages and put it into 10? But I am working on that, so as soon as that is, we'll put something out to people that is available on the website for download. I'm aiming between 10 and 15 pages. I'm trying to get this down to the essence of it and how to best use this document, just like the tutorial for the dashboard.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, council, we have one more item. Do you want to continue tonight or you want to postpone?
Is this a time-sensitive? Is Berkeley, is this time-sensitive with Berkeley?
It may be a quick item, depending on where the council is. It may, I don't, there's no, I would expect the, the Restaurant Association would not sue us in two weeks if we deferred it. It may also be a quick item.
Okay.
We'll defer it. We'll talk them into it.
Okay, let's defer it, and we'll move on to council.
As long as we don't get sued.
I have no guarantee.
I can't promise anything. I have no crystal ball. However, I'm confident we'll be able to talk them into a two-week pause.
Yeah, but if we don't, we'll have a special meeting.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Okay, any council member report?
Councilmember reports?
Councilmember reports? Nope. City manager's report?
No report, Mayor.
I'll give a quick.
Future agenda items?
Wait, I, I want to give a quick report. You know, I have been going to the Ventura County Transportation. Oh. Oh, okay. All right, I think I'm slowing. I just want to say how much I'm enjoying going to the Ventura County Transportation Commission meetings because they have programs that are very, very successful. They have, you know, free, free, ride free because that really pays off, and it makes me really want to take another look about how we can, you know, make the trolley more, more popular, more effective. And there, every meeting, it seems like there's these very positive reports on how people are using public transportation more and more. So I just think, and that's very important on, on many levels. I just want you to know, I'm going to those meetings.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Francina. All right, no city manager's report, no future agenda.
I just, I just wanted to say thank you for our, our gift of a jacket. Much appreciated. And I want to thank the mayor and also Councilmember Lang for always thanking the people responsible for putting this in front of us. I often forget that, and the mayor and Councilmember Lang never do, and it's much appreciated that you cover that for, for us.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Rule, for thanking us. Okay, I guess we are finished. So thank you all for a productive meeting, and we are adjourned.